Okay, I'll call a meeting to order. This is a meeting of the school committee. We are the Phillips administration building, two of us here and the others, the other members are on Zoom. Public can participate via Zoom and the Zoom address is on the agenda, which is available on the school website. Or you can also send a text message that can be read during the public forum. The text number is six one seven five eight one seven zero three seven. And this meeting is also broadcast live on cable TV. And it is recorded and will be posted to the website. So with the roll call, Amy.
Kendra Foley.
Present.
Lilly Raymond Reed.
Present.
Lindsay Mosca.
Present.
David Stokes.
Present.
John Ports.
Present.
Present.
And Amy Donahue.
Present.
First item will be the high school student advisors. We have, I think, we've got two people that were.
We should have two. I think one is having technical difficulties, so we can, we'll start with Shabnan Begum.
Okay, Shabnan, welcome.
Good evening. I am Shabnan Begum and it is my pleasure to be here today and have my voice be heard. I am grateful for the opportunity of being a student representative for Watertown High School. As a senior of this, as a senior student of the Watertown High School, our school has done a phenomenal job during this difficult time we are all currently in. Although we are in a world pandemic, our school has not let that impact the learning of the students and their goals. All staff members work extremely hard with us and support us during these difficult times. Even though we are remote, the National Honor Society students and advisors are working collaboratively to help with service projects. One of these service projects is tutoring and although we are unable to tutor the students in person, we meet with them on Zoom. And I have learned many new things during my experience as a high school student for the past four years. And I'm here to help others and give them useful and beneficial advice, especially for the freshmen, because it can be really hard to transition from middle school to high school and especially starting the year off with remote learning. They're unable to see their new teachers or the new school and meet with the people in person. I am a member of the National Honor Society and is an honor to be part of this club. The tutoring sessions take place and us upperclassmen tutor the students in the different subjects that they might be struggling with. The members and advisors of this club meet to make schedules and we plan new ideas for the students. We all collaborate our ideas together to come up with final conclusions that will benefit our students. Another thing I wanted to mention is that I am a student who is currently still fully remote. When we are not in school, we simulcast on Zoom. It is extremely working well for me and I am happy with remote learning because the teachers and staff members are supportive and extremely caring people. And as a senior at Watertown High School, I am currently in the process of college applications right now. And although I'm not able to meet with my guidance counselor in person, I am still able to get the same help and support with the remote learning. And we have remote meetings with my guidance counselor whenever I need help or further assistance with college process. And lastly, I have been asked to join the school site council to learn about the new building projects and the goals of the school. Parents, teachers and administrators and students are all part of the student side council. And I am extremely excited to be part of this and I am really eager to share my ideas and thoughts with all the members. Thank you.
Thank you, Shabnan. And you know, your input on the planning for the new high school, unfortunately, you won't be here, but we appreciate your input. Because you live there, you have some good ideas, I'm sure, about what that building could look like. Is the other advisor Catherine Seelow?
She's, she's, unfortunately, she's not in there, so I, I have to imagine, I emailed her, so we'll, maybe we'll get another intermission and here for another student. But Shabnan, thank you so much. I like, I want to grow up to be you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Listen, really quickly, I so appreciate hearing from you, Shabnan. And I love the idea of upperclassmen tutoring the freshmen. Is it mainly just freshmen? I just think that's such a smart way to engage new kids into the school. I think that's excellent.
Yes, right now it's mainly for the freshmen, but we also help like sophomore students too, because, I mean, it's good, only their second year, so they're still adjusting to the new environment. And being an independent person when they're in high school, so we help both the freshmen and the sophomores. It's mainly the freshmen because it's really hard for them right now. And they do this every year, like they tutor students and usually it's in person, like you meet with the student and you tutor them. But I mean, unfortunately, right now we are remote, so we just try to do our best and help them out while we're on Zoom. It's working really great actually, because we have separate breakout rooms for each subject. So whatever student may be having difficulty in a certain subject, they just join that specific breakout room.
Great, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Anyone, any other comments? Okay, again, thank you, Shabnan, for talking to us. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is the public forum. So this is an opportunity, anyone from the public wish to speak on a matter related to the schools. Standard, our procedure is to have up to three minutes. And if you raise your electronic hand, you can be recognized. We also have a public forum at the end of the meeting as well. Anyone wish to speak at this point? I don't see any hands.
I don't see any hands.
Okay, let's move on then. There are two items I'd like to, if you don't, if the committee doesn't mind, to bring out of order. One that I think we can spend fairly quickly is a request for a field trip. And we have social studies teacher James Buck here, I think, to represent that.
Okay, is it, am I on?
Yes, you are.
I'm Jim Buck and I am the one who's trying to put together this field trip. It's actually revisiting a trip that we had planned for last April. Which, I'm sure we all know what happened to that, but the, the trip is a 10 day trip as of now. It's scheduled for April of 2022. You know, and certainly hope that the whole situation with COVID has been resolved by then. But, you know, my motivation for wanting to go ahead with it is mainly because we came so close to going last time. And I'm really determined to make it happen. And so, and I think it's also, I also thought it was important to throw up in this opportunity, because I think it's a time when, when kids sort of need something to look forward to, you know, they, to, they, you know, they, lives have been limited in all sorts of unfortunate ways. And to have something like this to look forward to in the next year or so, I thought would be a good thing. So we decided to try to promote it for this time. Just to, you know, let you know what the itinerary is, and again, this would be during the April vacation of 2022, where we're supposed to visit four cities, Berlin, Prague, Krakow and Budapest. And I think it's just a wonderful tour, because not only does it give you the opportunity of visiting four different countries and experiencing four different cultures, but where, you know, we'll be primarily going, you know, with, with students who will be sophomores, juniors and seniors, and all of these, all of these places we're going to will have some educational value for what they've been studying. You know, we, obviously you have the Old World, Europe represented by all these, you know, all of these cities that have really long and colorful histories. But beyond that, you also have the Cold War history, you know, exemplified by like the Berlin Wall and even the way post-Cold War Eastern Europe has evolved in the years past, in the years, you know, subsequent years. There's also a good deal of World War II Holocaust history built into the trip. I think on the itinerary is visiting Dresden in Germany as well as, as well as Auschwitz and Birkenau in Poland. So, you know, I, I think it's a trip of tremendous value that, that I, I hope it would be a great experience for students who are joining us. As of now, we, you know, we, we had an initial meeting with, with interested students back just prior to Thanksgiving. And we've already got, we've got like 15 students enrolled tentatively so far. But, and I also want to continue the promotion, you know, in hopes that we can get an entire bus filled up, so we don't have to, to share with another school. Although that has some value too, if that's the way it turned out. But, you know, I'd like to get a few more travelers with us, so I wanted to make sure to, that I had approval before I went ahead and publicized it further. I'm not sure what else you need to know. I hope I'm not talking too long, but the, the cost is probably an important item. That as of now, that's 3,295. Everybody who enrolled up to now gets a $300, got a $300 sort of scholarship discount off of that price. And the, you know, there are various things built up and, you know, plugged into the agreement in case of the need for cancellation. But, you know, the most immediate thing is that there's risk-free 100% money back up until May of, May of this coming year. So, and, and, you know, beyond that, there are various opportunities to, to roll the money over for a future trip. You know, and all kinds of things which are spelled out in the, in the contract, which I think I shared with you folks. We have actually two travelers who were originally scheduled to go last year or taken advantage of the refund policy. So they hadn't, you know, that their trip for, for the coming year of 2022 is already taken care of. So they, you know, they do honor their, their responsibilities to people who had to cancel for reasons beyond their control.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, any questions from the school committee? Questions? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the field trip.
Second.
Any other discussion? The roll call, Amy?
Maxidiris.
Yes.
Lilly Reed.
Yes.
Kendra Foley.
Yes.
Lindsay Mosca.
Yes.
David Stokes.
Yes.
John Ports.
Yes, Amy Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Your approval at this point. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the other item I'd like to move up would be the presentation on the high school design. We have the outside architectural firm AI Three here. And we're excited we got this opportunity for, for us and the school committee, as well as the public who are attending to get this look at the high school. I think most of the people have been following the process and we're at a critical point, one of the key points here early in the stage of putting together the design and the architects with AI Three are here to talk a little bit about where it's at at this point in time. And particularly give us a sense of kind of the educational plan and what this might look like for a new high school, which is incredibly exciting for the community. So let me make sure whether Jim Gordon is here, right?
Yes.
Yes, I'm here, Mr. Ports.
Okay, for once, are you going to start or is there somebody else?
I, I will. I'll jump right in if you're all set.
I'm set. Go ahead.
Well, I want to thank Superintendent Galston and all the members of the school committee tonight to inviting us here to share with you where we're at in the design process for the new Watertown High School. My name is Jim Jordan with AI Three Architects and I'm very excited to share with you the developments of the preferred schematic solution as we're referring to it now for the Watertown High School. As you know, as the design of the new high school progresses, we continually reference the discussion we had during the educational visioning sessions when we consider adjacencies and program placement that we consider when we're moving the design forward. During the visioning sessions, we discussed guiding principles, design patterns. We also incorporated priority goals into the educational plan that manifest themselves into the preferred schematic design solution, which I'll share with you in a moment. In the early phases of the design, we discussed the importance of integrating academic and career technical programs through academic collaboration spaces embedded into each academic neighborhood. We also worked closely with the district leadership team over the last few months to further define these academic commons, which are flexible learning spaces that can be subdivided into specific learning tasks and activities. These spaces would be easily accessible and visible to both academic and career pathway programs. What you'll see on each slide tonight are these quotations off to the side of the diagrams. These are kind of guiding principles or concepts that were taken directly from your educational plan. And you'll start to see how these manifest themselves in a design that we're going to share with you in a moment. The educational plan identified the importance of subdividing the academic core into smaller academic neighborhoods and providing project-based learning opportunities into those neighborhoods. All these elements needed to be near the classrooms to maximize their use. Here in this diagram, you see the academic core divided into three neighborhoods by floor level. With the blue spaces representing core academic spaces and the red zones representing shared academic collaboration. The yellow box that starts from the upper floor and finds its way down through the academic core to the lowest level, what we call the ground level, represents the multi-level daylight core. The community core on the right side of the diagram contains the underground parking garage, the athletics auditorium, district administration components, and of course, student commons. And here you could see at the midpoint of the academic core, the innermost, midmost level, the second floor, is the community bridge that connects the two campuses together. This overall conceptual diagram includes key concepts such as daylighting for the academic core shown in yellow here and the visual connections shown in blue to the Phillips campus, to the Columbia Street campus across Common Street. We will continue to reference this diagram as we progress into schematic design, which is the next phase of the project. Once we're in schematic design, we'll have the opportunity to investigate the architectural style and ensure its responsiveness to the established context of the surrounding neighborhood, which includes the, the context for residents along Columbia Avenue, Spring Street, and of course, Marshall Street to the south. We will also continue to explore the educational opportunities that can emerge from the community bridge that spans the Philip Street campus as well as the Columbia Street campus. Our primary goal is to maintain the compact, multi-story building footprint to reduce the overall teacher-student travel time between both campuses. We will also investigate a building entry experience that is not only welcoming, inspirational and motivational, or produces a sense of Watertown pride. These goals were clearly identified in the educational plan and we look forward to working with you as we move into schematic design to show you some ideas that we're currently thinking about, that we're pushing forward so we could share those with you in the near future. Before I jump into a quick discussion about all three floor plans, once again, I highlighted a handful of the key concepts and priority goals extracted from your educational plan. For us, the success of this project is really going to be determined by the responsiveness of the design to these educational concepts. So looking at the lowest level floor plan, what we call the ground level floor, it allows direct access off of Spring Street. And this will become one of the main entry points for the Philip Street campus. And to provide a safe and a secure environment for student arrival and departure, we placed administration, guidance and medical office suites here with a lot of office and glass located along the exterior wall to monitor that entry. One of the things we discussed with the district leadership team and the building committee was trading, creating a true video production studio and a suite. Not only with the career technical educational program of video production shown here in blue, but also adjacent to the Watertown Cable Access TV studio, where students can actually access a lot of those programs and take advantage of those amenities within that studio space. One of the things that will really enhance this video production suite is a location of a black box theater adjacent to those programs. This concept was brought up in the visioning session when the participants expressed a desire for the black box performance space embedded in the academic core, so it can be used by both the school and the community. And this more intimate and flexible space would be especially useful in a high school environment with a relatively small student population like Watertown High School of about 720 students. So this will truly activate this career technical program, which is video production with those other community amenities. When we take a look at the upper floor level, which is the floor level, the first floor of the three-story academic core on the Philip site, we can see that we're placing expressive program elements along Common Street. That would include a high-tech robotics lab, two science labs and an upper art gallery for the second floor mezzanine of the black box theater below. That allows us an opportunity to pull the more quiet classroom, traditional classroom spaces, as well as special education classroom and support spaces behind that front face of facing Common Street here. You could see this white box with an X on it. That's actually open to below and allows that natural light to filter from the roof all the way through the upper floors to this point and progress through the floor below that we just looked at. You could see these darker yellow spaces being identified in the floor plans as we go through the next two sets of slides. This is that academic collaboration zone and we've just begun to subdivide this spaces into flexible breakout spaces, which are clearly accessible from a classroom neighborhood located here and an additional classroom neighborhood located here. And the function and use of these are to be determined, but right now you could see we're identifying pockets of informal gatherings, pivoting solid walls that can be closed to create more secluded teaching zones, a possibility for long-term project storage outside of a science lab, which this L-shaped element is representing, something similar to this here. We find that in high schools, kids want to spend time on long-term projects, usually from the science curriculum. And there's really no space to store those. So once we start thinking about those concepts and how they can be embedded in academic collaboration, it really starts to create a use for these spaces. When we look at the Columbia Street campus, you could see it's similar to what we're doing on the academic core on the Philip site. We're placing expressive program elements aligned along Common Street. And this really has an advantage of creating a really high-tech futuristic, I'd say almost an activated arts program. We really haven't defined what it could become yet, but when you start seeing traditional fine arts programs located here in addition to a hands-on fabrication wood shop, a high-tech engineering lab here and graphic arts, you can imagine the possibilities that are here. And, and the floor above would bisect that space as it comes across from the community bridge from the Philip's campus, creating a really dynamic view into those activated programs. And we think that'll become a really super nice response for the programs on the community core, as referred to them, to the academic core and that linkage between the two across Common Street. We also have the large underground parking lot on this main floor level. And in front of that, we'll have student commons, which will be the loud noise generating space and a, and a true community home for the community as well. And we could provide opportunities to really activate this glass wall with operable panels that allow students to freely engage the outdoors on nice days and take use of the flex field in front. There's also the district kitchen located here to support the, not only the district needs for food distribution to other schools, but also for the school use as well. And by placing culinary arts here, we truly create a really activated community zone here and with opportunities to enjoy the flex field outside. As we move up to the main, the second floor of the campus plan, you could see a very similar approach to the academic core facing Common Street. Here it's activated with the science labs located here, the bridge spanning across Common Street, and of course, the library media center located in a highly visible spot. And it's a great location for students. Students would travel from the floor below up one level to the media center or one level from above down to the media center. And it's really in a high, high-traffic area, so it can be easily accessible with a lot of visibility off the bridge. In fact, in the educational visiting sessions, we wanted to create a library media resource center, which serves as a learning commons and is highly integrated into the academic environment. You can see, I think we accomplished it by placing that program here. And of course, you'll see the traditional classrooms and special education programs wrapping around the edge, buffered by the expressive program elements along Common Street. On this floor and the floor above, you'll see a new layout for academic collaboration. This one more embedded for this academic neighborhood. And this one here for the academic neighborhood on the opposite side of the multi-story daylight core, which is shown here with this white X. Once again, you could see subdividing these spaces will happen in the future, but we're starting to indicate sliding glass panels, pivoting glass panels or low-height walls with small group breakout spaces, flexible glass boxes, so students can have more quiet for small group or even large group opportunities. And there could be an indication of daylight coming through those spaces from above that this diagram is starting to represent. So the opportunities here are truly exciting for us and we're looking forward to jumping into that with a little more rigor as we move into schematic design next month. Shifting gears to the upper level of the Columbia Street campus, you could see the second floor that activated futuristic arts program I referred to. An additional technology, engineering technology lab, another fine arts program stacked on the one below, the second floor of the wood shop below, you could start to see a true performing arts suite being located here with the 400-plus-seat auditorium, stage access behind the stage for green rooms, storage, band, choral, all located in a really nice performing arts suite. We tucked in early childhood career technical education program here, pushed it away from Columbia Street to offer the opportunity, opportunity for outdoor play zone that will be secured with low walls and other amenities that will provide there. And it allows parents to drop off along Columbia and have their child come directly into this program or be met by an educator and walked in from that person to the two classroom spaces that are identified on the corner. As we discussed with this arts location, the benefit of providing these programs in close proximity to the auditorium can't be underestimated. And it's one of the guiding principles we identified in the educational program. Another item we identified in the educational plan that you see manifested in this layout is the idea of connecting the gymnasium, the athletics program, fitness program in close proximity to the student commons. Here's another satellite student commons dining space, which isn't as noisy. It's on the second floor with an overlook to below, but it offers students the opportunity to access a satellite dining area where they can have grab-and-go opportunities, similar to a mall environment. And then they could, in, in a smaller seating area, they can seat along the exterior wall here and have an opportunity for one or three group seatings where they could study for an exam or prep for a class that's coming up and have a little more quiet time, but also be able to look outside to the flex field below. So this will be a real nice opportunity for students to take advantage of this. And it highlights one of the things we talked about in the ed plan, which is making an obvious connection between fitness and nutrition by placing. And it highlights one of the things we talked about in the ed plan, which is making an obvious connection between fitness and nutrition by placing these programs here. And finally, as we go up to the third floor. We'll see the upper zone of the academic core, which is very similar in layout to the zone below. Once again, placing expressive programs along Common Street, which would include two additional science labs. We have a real nice science lab suite facing Commons. Street. And here we tucked in the fab lab, the business lab and the journalism lab, which could have a direct connection to the library media center below. And this offers them a visual connection to the media center below, which you see here in this white box with the X through it. That represents the upper floor of the media center. And again, you could see other ideas that we have for these dark yellow student collaboration zones. Whether they're solid pivoting walls that have writing surface on them. Or in fact, even like an overhead coiling grill can be used or sliding solid panels or pivoting glass panels. These are the things we're going to begin to explore more depth with the district leadership team and the building committee in the months ahead. When we switch to talk about the academic, I'm sorry, the. Community center on the Columbia Street campus, you could see additional programs such as the elevated walking track. Which allows great views and overflow spectator standing area to watch events below in the gymnasium. And again, we have the fitness weight program located here. And coming over this area with circulation down one level to the, to the academic bridge below, get you back to the academic core. And we know that the Watertown High School is going to be, in our minds, a true facilities, a true community facility. Designed to support both school and community use, which extends well beyond the traditional school day. Allowing students to continue their academic, athletic and social endeavors in a safe environment. And incorporates the greater community. That's taken directly from your ed plan. And it's one of the things we constantly reference whenever we're starting to place program on the site to see how they work together. To make sure this is truly a unique response to your unique educational forward-thinking 21st century educational plan. And then finally, just to give you a sense of the massing, just two slides here. This shows a view down Common Street to Mount Auburn beyond. It shows the massing of the gymnasium and the two-story athletic building. This entry corridor from Columbia Street aligning with Robin Road. And also the auditorium performing arts. You could see the compact academic core on the Philip site. The elevated bridge and how those programs can start to respond to each other that I keep referring to as expressive programs. We definitely want this campus to feel like it's connected and not only by the bridge, but visually with its massing and its response across the campus. And lastly, a view down Common Street from the Mount Auburn side. You could see the scale back of the program along Philip Street amassing as well as this. As one building committee member called it the front lawn of the community core located here with that expressive art program. Which will be embedded in this zone, having a view to the flex field, the student commons, a view and a possible use of the flex field and direct connection to. And how that truly creates a nice front lawn for the school. So we're, we're super excited about the project. We think it's moving in an excellent direction. It's. It was great to have consensus last week with the building committee. To select the preferred schematic design so we can really jump in and really push this forward for you and show you what the possibilities are in the upcoming meetings. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to chat about it.
Thank, thank you very much, Jim. This, it's very exciting for all of us and we appreciate all the work that you and AI three are doing, all your colleagues. I think in creating, you know, a very, a very interesting, challenging, very exciting design for, for the high school future. Let me ask you, any questions from the school committee members? Questions or comments?
I have questions. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Been following this for many, many months and been really impressed with AI three and what you've been able to do and the iterations you've made and. I just, it is really exciting for the, for the school and for the community. So I thank you.
A couple of questions. One is. I've seen the, over the last maybe two months, just some shifts happening. And I have questions about those. So one is that the Philip site has been shrinking. And, and programs have been moved from the Philip site over to the Columbia Street site. For example, that whole arts area, the fab lab, the engineering lab, medical, as well as the dining. Cause that was originally over, at one point it was over at the Philip site. And so my concern is for the student experience during this construction. I, I know you didn't show the phases, but the phases, there's three years after the academic building is built. That the phase two and three are the Columbia Street area is going to be built. So my question is. You know, what happens during those three years for the student experience, for dining, for art, for, for. The fab lab, for the medical program, for the engineering program, what kind of access are we, I don't want to have this beautiful building and then misuse it. In those three years when we're having this transition. So I just wonder what your thoughts are on that. That was my first question.
Yeah, it's an extra, excellent point, Mrs. Foley. And it's one of the things I think was brought up at the building committee meeting previously last week and. We have to be very cautious about phasing for this project. It's a complicated phasing project. We have to make sure that the line of demarcation, if you will, between all phases. Falls in alignment with capturing as many programs as we can to limit the disruption for students, but. Because we're working on two campuses and there's a lot of logistics involved, one of the things we talked about early on when we started to. Really refine this plan and this, this option in more detail. Was to take advantage of those flexible collaboration spaces that are really going to incur and are embedded in the academic core. So as you know, as part of phase one, after the demolition of the buildings on the Philip site, this is really the focus of construction for that first year. So the idea is to get the majority of the spaces that students will be engaged in. Built and operational substantially complete before we start clipping off anything on the existing school side. You are correct. There are some specialized programs located here, but I think. Because these are so embedded in the academic core and by providing different levels of. Isolation and acoustical treatment within them, they're just not one large open space. These can start to begin to activate either an option for alternate dining. Because the dining area will be coming offline here and that's something we're currently doing at the Hosmer School. Where they don't have a dining component as part of those phases, so they have to make do with what they can in the academic zone. This is a little bit different than that, but you can imagine some of these spaces are the size of a classroom or even larger. The typical classroom is eight hundred and fifty, nine hundred square feet. Where one of these collaboration zones right here, this one's almost twelve hundred square feet. It's very comparable to an art lab or an engineering tech lab. So these could become those satellite spaces for use until these programs come online. Not that they'd have all the amenities, but they could definitely deliver a program responsive to what's not coming online yet. Because they offer that true flexibility that we're looking to build into the plan. So for us, they're not only important for the educational plan, but they're also important for future flexibility. That we need for that year or two when these other programs are coming online. So we're going to start thinking about those creative ways of addressing those things as we move forward and what's online and what's offline and for how long and what the approach is going to be for each of those steps.
Okay, thank you. You, you mentioned the programs. Is, are there thoughts about the dining though? Cause that is, would take a larger space and I don't know if. That's being built in the flex dining space is being built into the Philip site.
There, there could, there would be, there, there would need to be a discussion with the district about losing the district kitchen, for instance, if that in fact does happen. What will they do with outside vendors to overcome that? And it's not a permanent thing, but it will be temporary for a couple of years. So that. Discussion has not happened to my knowledge just yet, but we would be involved in those discussions in the future. So those details have to be addressed and worked out. Now that this plan has just been approved last week, we'll start to push those concepts forward. And I think schematic design, design development. So really in the next year, sixteen months is when we'll have to have those conversations and figure out a game plan for how to address those issues.
Okay, great. And I appreciate that not all these details are set yet. And I hope that moving forward, I know the committee's done such a great job making a lot of really good decisions. I just want to reiterate that the importance of making sure that the lived experience for those students who are there during that transition is as good as it can possibly be. I had two, two more questions. One was, and I know I mentioned this at the, at the meeting last week, but. I do think moving facilities, and I know that's a town decision, it would be a great opportunity to build more space, potentially more green space or other space. And my last question is, is about, there's two houses on the Philip site. I wonder if there's been any discussion about buying out those two houses. It seems like it could be a good investment and have like a long-term benefit for the Philip school site in terms of, because it is a. It's, it's, you only have so much space on there and it could give us a lot more opportunity.
Good question. I haven't been part of those conversations. I don't know if they're taking place or not, so I couldn't comment on those.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions from committee members? Anyone else have a question or comment? Mark?
I just have a couple of comments. First of all, thanks, Jim and AI three. But I also want to thank the administration and Compass Project Management, who has been keeping us focused and keeping this thing moving along and making sure that. Everybody's meeting and making sure that the, the building is meeting the educational needs of the children, the administration. And as we move into the next phase, I'm sure there'll be other people that are getting involved, including high school students, community members. During those other conversations that the building committee wouldn't be involved in. So it's, it's. We have a great team working here and I think that's a real important key to this whole project. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay?
Hi, um, I just kind of, actually this is really a nice follow-up from what, you know, Kendra in Mark had said, so. Yeah, I am, you know, really proud of the work that the district has done so far in, in the committee and everyone working on this project has done so far. You know, I think that the, the student experience in this now very long construction process is really important. I'll put in my, my usual pitch every time we talk about this, you know, as we keep getting further, it's going to become increasingly important that. Parents who will have school, kids who go to school in these buildings while under construction or afterwards and students who will be attending there. You know, I, I personally would love to hear more of those opinions. You know, in our public comments during school building committee meetings and getting more people involved in that, you know, I think that their opinions and perspective of what this would feel like. You know, having class in one of these shared spaces or, or not getting to have lunch in the shared space for two years and things like that, you know, that's all. All things that I think are extremely important. I mean, there are going to be some kids who are in a construction area for five years. In this project and I just want to make sure that we get a lot of perspectives about what that's going to feel like and what will work best as we plan this out, but also keeping a focus on. You know, that educational experience for kids in that time and afterwards. And I think that we just really need more parents and students to participate. And would love to hear more of that at our meetings.
Thank you, Lindsay. Anyone else wish to speak, questions or comments from the committee?
I'm reports. Could I for just a minute? It's Christie.
Yes, Christie, go ahead.
I'd just like to remind everybody, and if you could share with your community and, and any opportunity you could. To remind people that if they have questions or want to keep up with what we're doing to go to the Watertown Building for the Future site. And link to the high school project site. We're updating the schedule. We're updating meetings. There's links to agendas and presentations, but there's also a contact us so they can email. And we're going to track those questions on a frequently asked questions page. So just really trying to engage people that way using the website. Thank you.
Yeah, Christie, thank you. It's a good point. And, you know. Starting in, well, in January and moving on into next year, there'll be a number of meetings to talk about the same design and. As it gets further along the process, it'll be more fine-tuning. So plenty of opportunities to weigh in. Anyone else, any other comments? Okay, Jim, Jim, thank you again very much for coming. We appreciate it very much. You've spent a lot of evening meeting times. But we appreciate you coming to the school committee and telling us a little bit more about where this stands. Great. Well, thank you for inviting me. I appreciate it.
Okay, great. Going back to the agenda, next teaching and learning showcase, we actually have three presentations here. And let me turn it over to the superintendent for introduction.
Excellent. Actually, I'm going to move it right on over to Dr. McGinnis, who's going to provide us with an overview of the teaching and learning showcase. And we're very excited to highlight our, our ed tech week this week, which is very exciting as well as some of the opportunities that we have. To help our parents as we are in our hybrid. And last but not least, there's an overview of our first round of assessment data. So we're very excited to share with the community a lot of the great work that's happening. So Dr. McGinnis?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Goldston. So this evening we have a few curriculum coordinators with us who. Work directly in the planning and execution of a lot of this. So we have Rashmi Pramakar and Kate Phillipson. Who are first, Dr. Goldston, if you have a couple of slides there on computer science, they're going to talk about computer science week and then weave into also on that slide set. The supports that we have ongoing for parents, including the parents of our English language learners, which are pretty extensive and we're pretty proud of. So, yeah, we'll start with Rashmi, who I believe is a panelist right now.
I believe so, yes.
Good evening, school committee members, Dr. Goldston, Dr. McGinnis, principals, families, everyone. Thank you so much. For our ed tech, for all learning and support presentation, we have sort of four items that we're talking about. First is our WPS CS Ed Week celebrations. This is a global event that's happening all over the world from December seventh. It started today. And then we are moving on to the, up until the thirteenth, which includes the weekend. Dr. Goldston, if you could please, thank you. The second part, we're going to talk about our amazing touchscreen Chromebook deployment for grade one and grade two. It is quite exciting that our little ones are getting the touchscreen Chromebook throughout last week and this week. And then we'll talk about the attack supports for all families and especially for ESL families. Next slide, please. Thank you. Dr. Goldston, if you could please click on the website link. This is our CS Ed Week website, which is the Computer Science Education Week. WPS ages students in interdisciplinary computational thinking and problem-solving activities throughout the school year. So it's not a, it's a. More of a learning continuum and CS Ed Week forms sort of this week of celebration, which again contributes to their learning, but it doesn't stop with CS Ed Week. As you already know, the global CS Ed Week is being hosted across the world from December seventh to December thirteenth. So weekends are also a joy of learning. And the theme for this year, excitingly, is CS for Social Justice. Keeping in mind the theme, WPS has collaborated and drew inspiration from a lot of the NSF-funded grants who are doing really amazing work in this field. Such as CS for All, IST has a CSPLN, CSTA, MIT Media Lab. And so a lot of the curriculum that you'll see right now is sort of inspired and curated from these phenomenal resources. Dr. Goldston, if I could please request you to click on the curriculum tab and then elementary, oh, just on the website. Yeah, there is, if you go up, yeah, elementary. So this is just an example, but our curriculum is sort of. Curriculum offering is divided, oh, if you could, yeah, on the elementary, yep. So the first part is CS for Social Justice units, and these are really meaningful, purposeful. Units that are for all ages. So they're distributed in elementary, middle and high school categories. But are very meaningful and sort of are conducive for a purposeful dialogue. The second part of the curriculum is more sort of interdisciplinary, one hour of activity, less so of the hour of code, but more interdisciplinary computational thinking. less so of the hour of code, but more interdisciplinary computational thinking and problem solving. So you'll see themes like beach cleanup or recycling, MLK Week. And they are using tools to look at real, real-world problems and trying to solve it even within that one hour of time that they're engaging in it. These are all free. We intentionally look at activities that are free and are, again, you know, engaging and computational thinking for problem solving. And lastly, we also have like a curated project-based learning activity section. We cannot sort of give the Lego kits, but we also have activities which are online simulators that allow you to engage in similar kinds of activities. So for example, Micro:Bit has an online simulator where kids can do a similar activity, but they won't be able to physically interact with the device. Or B-Box, there is an online activity that they still get to do. So it's not the same, but it's at least trying to give a similar experience. So that's sort of our CS EdWeek curriculum. In addition to that, we are running an amazing Creating with Computer Science Problem, Computer Science Student Contest. So Dr. Goldston, if you could click on the student contest. There are four areas, sorry, if you go up on the tab, there are four areas that kids can interact on, you know, submit their solutions or they design their solution or model their solutions. And these, they can enter in one or all four of them. And the projects can be with any of the tools. So it's an open-ended sort of a structure, but they can also do photos and videos and animation. So it's sort of encourages creativity in all aspects. And then we have some fun little prizes. Hopefully we are going to get, last year we had around 100-plus entries. So we hope to have crossed that mark this year, pandemic or no pandemic. We are problem-solving all the time. So that's exciting. And then they get this amazing certificate that we create, Dr. Goldston and principals dole it out. There is an honor system. So kids have to engage in the CS activity and then they get the certificate. These are, these are something that we designed. So nobody else outside is getting these, our kids are getting these. And they, of course, throughout the week, they can download it and they write their names on it. But it's genuinely a joy. Principals and Dr. Goldston has to sign off on it. That would be fun, at least 1,000 certificates. So that's, that's our CS EdWeek. And if we, Dr. Goldston, if you could go back to the presentation. The other exciting happening that's happening, sorry, that's, that's happening right now is the touchscreen deployment for our little ones, grade ones and grade two. With a tech team is working with the IT team and the, under the guidance of principals and APs, and of course, district leadership to get these out. The focus is again, purposeful and safe usage of touchscreen technology and sort of, you know, making sure that the Chromebook care guidelines are followed and that the kids are aware of what is a good way of interacting with these devices and a safe way and a purposeful way. So there is intentional way in which library media folks are going to have some lessons that talk about how to bookmark, for example, or how not to press on a Chromebook so that the touchscreen pixels are not getting damaged, so things like that. We also have a resource hub for parents so that they can, or families so that they can connect to the internet, which is first very important. And then sort of going on from there and learning small, in small bits and chunks, how to, how to make sure we have a purposeful usage of these devices. And then sort of moving on to the next one, we have a, it's a very intentional focus for our families, all our families. So Dr. Goldston, if you could click on that website link, which is at the top. This is our family, Family EdTech For All's resource hub. You can see the first half is sort of videos that we've created with the ESL department with Kate Phillipson and her team, where we are intentionally creating these family guides for, in Spanish and Portuguese. We also have a PASH2 one that's coming up for Zoom, which again, this is something that happens weekly. We have weekly family sessions that are also happening. And, you know, it's genuinely a warm, warm interaction when, you know, families are sort of having these positive conversations and having a positive technology experience. It is challenging at times and we understand that, but we have a really great team. And we get around 300-plus a request a week, just in EdTech. And some of the questions are really wonderful because they, they sort of, questions tell you how they are using the device sometimes and how they want more from the device. So it's kind of also good to hear some of the struggles that they are having because it's productive struggle. There is also a newsletter that goes out for families every week, which has troubleshooting tips or tips about a specific device, a tool that's getting rolled out. And that is also included in the newsletter. And principals are very, very intentional in sending these information out to, to the families on a very regular basis. I will move, I will let Kate, Kate, I can't see you, sorry. Kate, yep, sorry. Kate will talk about the RESL support. And it's a joy to work with Kate and her team. It's just, and the families are just amazing.
And thank you so much Rashmi for all your support and help. So one of the big issues when we went into the pandemic in March was that families were having a challenge with using all the technology. Many of them have not so much technology at home. And so the technology they did have, when we're trying to introduce all these platforms, was, was hard. Because most folks just had experience with their phone. So after much discussion, Rashmi and I came up with the idea to create videos to help parents learn how to help their students better. So, so far, we've been focusing mostly on Spanish and Portuguese as that's the two largest populations that we have. And we've been doing videos on CSAR and Google Classroom, Khan Academy, Brain Pop and Zoom. So the ones from Zoom were from when we first started in March to try to help parents figure out how to get their students onto Zoom and then, you know, how to have people muted and all the things that everyone was learning when we first started. Could you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. The other thing that we have, we've been very fortunate with in Watertown due to Title III support predominantly, but also district leadership has been extremely helpful in having us support family liaisons. And these are, some are parents or community members who speak other languages and help us help families. They help in lots of ways, mostly contacting them, making sure people are on their schedules. And also, you know, helping parents troubleshoot the technology, learn how to use Zoom and all these things, but how do you work a hotspot? And, you know, how do you log into your Chromebook, things like this. We also, Rashmi's team was very helpful as well because they helped us get this EdTech For All support form, which is where people can make requests if they have any troubles with technology. And it is translated into Spanish and Portuguese. And then there are live Zoom sessions as well. And my department has provided interpreter support so that if a family does need help, that they can get help in the language they speak. And finally, we translated the Chromebook agreement so that parents and students would know exactly what they're signing and what they need to do on their end to be responsible Chromebook users. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kate and Rashmi. That was wonderful. You are very flexible and have really responded to parents' needs and students' needs in the district. So greatly appreciate that. Dr. Goldston, would you mind opening the next slideshow? And that is on the iReady Fall Diagnostic?
Well, please.
Let me ask first, you know, thank you very much for that presentation. Very, very interesting. It's, you know, amazing and fascinating really the amount of outreach that you're doing, different languages, to families. You know, it's incredible. Thank you very much. At this point in the presentation, any questions or comments from school committee members? And then we'll go to the iReady after that. Lindsay?
Hi, I just had a quick question about, you know, students in the Computer Science Week. I mean, the activities look so fun and is super exciting. I'm just kind of wondering what are kids going to be doing some of that when they're in school or on remote days or be assigned some of those things? So I'm just kind of curious how kids should be attempting to access some of those really amazing things on that website? And is that built into their time or is that something that parents should go looking for?
Excellent question, Lindsay. As a mom, for me too, it's, it's, it's sort of a balance of time. So we have both. I want to say there is an intentional focus on, you know, integrating this during the library media classes or, you know, also making it available for all interdisciplinary subject areas. So curriculum coordinators and Elizabeth and Deb are here. They're also making an effort in sort of articulating it. And we have iReady this week with Kate, so they might not be able to do a whole lot. But others, we have at high school, middle school and elementaries, they will be engaging. That doesn't mean that we should not be doing this during, at home because kids problem-solve all the time at home and there are unplugged activities. So it doesn't have to be with a device or with, with certain things. There are obviously online simulators, but if you don't want to touch a computer screen because screen time is a concern, the unplugged activities like Rub Goldberg or binary bracelets, those are kind of activities that can be done as well. And they are on the website to spread the word.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Rashmi. Any other comments or questions? Okay, move on to the iReady.
Excellent. Well, please.
Perfect, thank you. Well, good evening. It is my pleasure to share our assessment updates with you this evening. And in just a moment, I'll be joined by three instrumental curriculum coordinators. Elizabeth Kaplan, Arcata 7 Math Science Coordinator. Deb Opar, Arcata 7 English Language Arts Social Studies Coordinator. And Dr. Suzanne Dunn, Arcata 8th Grade through 12th Grade English Coordinator. Dan Wolfe also assisted us with all of the data collection, but he's teaching a class tonight. These coordinators will present the overview of the data analysis and our action planning for grades K through 9 in both math and literacy using the fall iReady diagnostic results. But first I want to share a little introduction and background to help everybody contextualize these assessments. As a professional learning community, we directed our collected efforts over the past several months really, to identifying specific instructional tools that are best aligned to the delivery of our curriculum. iReady is one of those tools. It's an assessment, but it also has supplemental online instruction component to it. We're entering our third year of implementation of iReady in math and reading. And we're doing it with Fidelity, which is terrific. The iReady data, the use of it is threefold. Primarily, we use it for the diagnostic to assist us in determining students' needs, then to personalize their learning through differentiated instruction, and then to help us progress monitor their learning throughout the school year. To do that, students in grades 1 through 8 participate in three diagnostic winter, spring and fall. And our kindergartners have two diagnostic assessments in the winter and then again in the spring. They need the fall time just to acclimate to being in school full-time. And then finally, in the ninth grade, it's administered twice a year for beginning of the year data and end of year growth, in addition to informing some groupings. But most importantly, iReady data allows us to meet students exactly where they are and then to use this data to increase students' learning gains throughout the school year. A note of caution, when we look at these slides this evening, iReady data that's going to be presented represents one set or a point in time data that when combined with other assessments like classroom assessments that teachers give, literacy benchmarks across all of the elementary schools, common assessments in various classrooms, and then MCAS when we do have that. These collective data can definitely inform instruction at the programmatic level, but more importantly, for use in targeting instruction and intervention at the student level. So that's our focus. With regard to the data that you'll see in just a moment, our primary focus is using these to personalize teaching and learning at the student level. The PowerPoint is an overview of the data and the purpose is to compare student performance last fall versus this fall, paying particular attention to any trends that may indicate learning loss or regression. Currently, we are spending significant time analyzing student-level data to account for individual student performance gaps, planning remediation that's integrated into the present-year grade-level standards and monitoring growth. The charts that are in this PowerPoint illustrate student performance on the fall diagnostic in 2020 as compared to fall 2019. But it should be noted that there are different cohorts of students each year. The general implications from these data that you'll see from Deb, Elizabeth and Suzanne is that with the exception of grade nine reading, the aggregate data reveal no regression in math or reading comparing 2020 to 2019 data. Now, caution in using only this data point is necessary as this is only one measure. And teachers and our coaches and our curriculum coordinators, our principals and us as district leaders, we use multiple measures to determine and monitor student achievement and growth. And finally, an important note in further contextualizing these data. This is a most unique year in Watertown Public Schools and across America. Students and staff are teaching and learning in three settings, remotely, hybrid, in person, and they're trying to do it all safely. A COVID pandemic ensues and there are heightened racial injustices that we are grappling with, which require explicit and expedited change. During all of this, our teachers continue to pour their hearts, their minds and their souls into supporting students' learning in Watertown Public Schools, especially during this most challenging of our school years. Our instructional coaches that we've hired K through 8, our curriculum coordinators and our principals are tirelessly working to systematically support our faculty members in providing a cohesive curriculum across grade levels and across schools, using myriad new ed technology platforms and apps that Rashmi shared with you earlier, designed to increase student engagement, because that's an issue that we're all grappling with. And we're all trying to do our best to support one another socially, our social emotional well-being as we try to balance this new work environment and the unique home needs that everyone has. But one thing is very clear. We are fortunate and we are most grateful for the faculty and support staff and the organizational structure we have designed in Watertown Public Schools. And thank the school committee and the town for supporting us financially to do all of this work. A good example is the grade one and two Chromebooks that Rashmi just shared. But we know that for many, not all, but many of our students, particularly our English language learners, our students with IEPs or students in various subgroups, learning remotely is not in their best interest. So phasing into hybrid has provided a much-needed and a much-welcome opportunity to support students in persons, and in-person teachers can't say enough praise about it. So Dr. Goldston, if you could just forward to the next slide, I'm just going to introduce it. And then Deb Opar will present some K to 9 data and action planning that we're going to do. On this slide, it's just showing you how we did the testing or the assessment. Some was at home, the majority was in school. But by grade level, you can see whether it was a virtual class or a hybrid class where they were tested. The statistics are that in our elementary classrooms, grades 1 through 5, 96% of students completed iReady assessment. In the middle school, it's 93%. In grade nine, it's 85%, but their window is still open. So Dan and Suzanne are following up to ensure that more students are able to finish the iReady. You, at your leisure, can click on the parent support videos and support documents, which iReady are excellent given from iReady, that parents have appreciated. And also, even as this week, Deb and Elizabeth And also, even as this week, Deb and Elizabeth are offering Zoom iReady support for our virtual students and families at home. And next slide, please, Dr. Goldston. We're going to move to elementary and we're going to start with elementary reading, I believe, and Deb Opar. So Deb, you are on for the next slide.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. McGinnis. Hello, everyone. Nice to be with you this evening. Can you go to the next slide, please? So what I'll do is I'll first share with you an overview of our grades one through five iReady data. Again, this is comparing the beginning of last year on the right, the fall of 2019, to the data that our students, we just received when our students just took the diagnostic at the beginning of this school year. Again, this has all three elementary schools together in one chart. And when you look at this, you see three levels. You see students that are in the green. They scored on grade level and those in the yellow scored just one grade level behind. But that's actually to be expected at the beginning of the year because they haven't yet been exposed or been taught to any grade level standards. So that is actually, you know, what iReady and we see across the country that that's normal and expected at the beginning of the year. And students in that red part of the triangle scored two or more grade levels below, behind. And so we take this data, we've looked at this with our coaches, with our teachers. They've looked at this both for their grade level and in their classroom and really done some good analysis to see where each of their students so far and really started to take some action steps that we'll talk about in a moment. Our students will take this assessment again, another diagnostic, and that's when we really get to look at growth and we look at their growth over time is seeing where they are right now and then where they are in February when we take this again. So we'll talk again, like I said, about action steps in a moment, but it's helpful to really have a picture of where students are at the start of the year. And if you look from the beginning of last year to the beginning of this year, it's just about comparable data with 40% of students in that on-grade level bucket at the beginning of last year and 46% on-grade level at the beginning of this school year.
Evening, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Kaplan. And as Deb said, we have similar data for math. So you can see here, Deb did a nice job explaining what the yellow, red and green mean. So what we have here is fall 2019 for all grades one through five across all three elementary schools versus fall 2020. And you will see that 27% last year were in the green for math, which means on or above grade level, and 29% this year were. Now, these percentages are lower than the reading percentages for being on grade level. It's been that way for years and by the time we're at MCAS, we are not lower necessarily. It's because of how reading skills develop versus students being explicitly taught certain grade level math skills. So I want to point that out. We had 22% of our students at risk for tier three or in the red in 2019 and 18% of students this year in the red. So again, it is on par with what we've seen. This is a very kind of high level bird's eye view of the data. But as Deb said, we've been really digging in with teachers and we are digging in with the teachers at their individual student level again on Wednesday this week. In terms of how we are using the various reports and iReady and how we're addressing what we see here for math, iReady has a new, and we'll talk about it in action steps, but I'm mentioning it now, has a new report called prerequisite reports for math. And they developed this in light of the pandemic last year. So what we are able to see is when we're planning a unit with our coaches, our teachers are able to go in and look at their students and say, okay, who has the prior skills from the prior grade level and is ready to go? Who needs a little bit more support and who needs in-depth review? So we're really getting ahead in planning units to think about where students are at in terms of their prerequisite math skills.
So this next slide shows you sort of the next level of data that iReady provides us. And again, this is a sample of grade three, but we have this type of data for all individual students as well as grade levels. And what you see on the right side are the six different domains for literacy. So the test is an adaptive assessment and it really shows us how students are doing from phonological awareness to phonics to vocabulary to comprehension. So what we're then able to do is get a more nuanced picture. It's not just that a student is scoring one grade level below. It's that they have certain strengths and they have some areas of need similar to what Elizabeth just mentioned. And then we can actually take this information and triangulate it with other assessments that we've been doing. So we can say, what is the student's reading level? What are we noticing when they're reading in class? Or we can ask questions and say, why did they show up in the red here for phonics, but we're not noticing that in class? And we can actually administer further assessments if we have more information that we'd like to gather. And this secondary report also really helps us match students with appropriate interventions and make sure that students are getting the right supports that they need from Title I tutors and reading specialists, et cetera.
And again, this is another example of the same report for math. And you can see, this is an example of fifth grade. You can see the placement by domain. Again, this is for the whole district, but it is really helpful for us looking at this data to not only think about student achievement, but think about our curriculum and what we're teaching. And so across most, I think almost all of the grade levels, we noticed geometry was a lower kind of performing domain on our iReady assessment, which makes sense to us. Geometry standards were not priority standards put out by the D's this spring. And so lower performance in that domain is to be expected. We will address again those learning gaps, as I mentioned before, as we head into new geometry units. But our students overall did well in what we would call the major and most important work of math at elementary school, which is numbers and operations and algebraic thinking. This grade level is sort of all even, but we noticed some trends in terms of that. Again, teachers supported by coaches are using new math reports to kind of analyze student skills. So we're making decisions, kind of big picture decisions about our curriculum and using the data that way and then digging in at the student level to make sure that we are providing each student with what they need for math.
So these are an overview of the action steps that we are taking. And just to highlight a few, as we said, we're looking at multiple sets of data. We're really making sure that we have a complete picture of students. And when we have questions that we're getting more information, and especially right now, when sometimes we feel there's more questions that are gathered regularly, we say, what other information do we need in order to then provide students with the right support? So yeah.
In terms of action steps, we've mentioned the prerequisite reports for iReady for planning, triangulation of the data, literacy and math data through coaching and data meetings. We have our reading specialists doing small group interventions. We have wonderful, amazing Title I tutors in both literacy and math this year. Just they work tirelessly for tier two support with our students. With the new, with our current hybrid schedule, there's actually, as you know, intervention time on students at extension days. So it's been really nice to have that time to provide intervention. We have really excellent coaches and they're providing ongoing support for teachers and having very regular meeting times with teachers. We are going to administer the growth monitoring interim assessment through iReady in January. That only takes about 20 minutes. It's a very brief test. And then the second diagnostic in late February or early March. Usually, that's our winter diagnostic, but because of how late we got started this year and giving the diagnostic later, that is about the time where we'll give it. We will give one at the end of the year again in spring. By giving the growth monitoring at the elementary level, we will get, the winter diagnostic will be our third data point, which we've done in the past, and it gives us some really nice growth data for students. So as Deb mentioned, in January, we'll really be digging in to see how our students have grown and responded to our instruction this year.
Elizabeth and Deb, and we, oh, actually, you're going to do middle school before.
Yeah.
Those high schools. So continue.
We see the same charts for grades six through eight for reading. And again, you'll notice that at the beginning of last year, we had 44% of our students in that green on grade level. And this year, it was 48% of our students with more students in the red in grade six through eight. And again, we'll talk about this in a moment, but we've really been increasing the amount of reading specialist support, making sure that we have our Title I tutor prioritized in the right grades and where the most need is and ensuring that teachers are looking at this data so that they can also be using it within their classroom instruction as well.
In terms of math, you can see we have, from fall 2019, about 35% of the students were at or above grade level. And this year, it's 44% of the students. We have just a little bit more of our students, 25% this year at risk for tier three, which means they're two or more grade levels below. And again, we have a new math coach at the middle school and she is working very closely with teachers. We have a tier two intervention starting and we are doing some new things with math curriculum at the middle school as well. So we are spending a lot of time looking at the individual student data and the math teachers at the middle school have been so working very hard this year.
And thank you. So the action steps at the middle school, again, as Elizabeth mentioned, we have the prerequisite reports. We have Title II and Title I, or sorry, Tier II Title I tutoring that's happening. As I mentioned, we added some reading specialist support on extension days for students. And our reading specialists are also actually pushing into the ELA classrooms, both to support students that are on Zoom, but also to support with differentiation and really thinking about how to meet the needs of students that need support in accessing our grade level content and the novels that they're reading right now. There's again, great coaches at the middle school who are doing great coaching meetings twice a week with teachers and really thinking about their planning. And then again, we'll be doing the diagnostic in February to get more follow-up information.
And one more thing, thinking about in terms of math in our tier three students at the middle school, we are actually using a really rigorous standards-based math curriculum in our self-contained programs and the teachers have really enjoyed doing it. So we're kind of, I feel like being more tightly aligned with our math curriculum standard space in our special education programs, which I think is going to help tremendously with some of our students who might have been below grade level as well.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Dunn, the grades eight through 12 coordinator for English. I'm going to be presenting both the reading data and the math data since Dan Wolfe couldn't be here. So looking at 2020, we had 43% of students meeting the grade level expectation, whereas last year we had a 51%. When we get into the analysis, I'll talk a little more about that. But right now, I'm just going to, oh, sorry, can you change to the next one? Right now, I'm just going to present you with the numbers and then we will go into the analysis. So in math, you will see that it was 65% this fall and it was 66% with the same same grade level last year at this time. So a couple of things I'm going to talk about having to do with ELA especially. But overall, I can say, you know, there are some action steps that both Mr. Wolfe and I are going to take. We are looking at which curricular domains the students need to work on. We are going down student by student and looking which students need to work on which skills. We are meeting with our departments to go through this data and make a plan for instructional groupings, professional development for our teachers. We are looking at all of these supports that we can put in place for these students in order to make sure they're getting any intervention they need. So as an example, this week, the English department is meeting for their professional learning time Wednesday after school. And we are going to look at that list that I have created of which students fell into the yellow and red and where they fell into the yellow and red. And we're going to examine that list as a department, look at what supports they currently have. They might have an academic support block or a resource support or special ed services. So we are going to go through all of that on Wednesday and come up with a plan for the teachers to create instructional groups as well as provide specific interventions for specific students. I wanted to add also that we, since we are the grades eight through 12 coordinators, we are working with our eighth grade teachers currently as well too. Once a week, I meet with the eighth grade team along with our coach Kelly Spillane, our literacy coach, to curriculum plan together. So we're working with the eighth grade level too to strengthen eighth grade supports at the same time. Did I leave anything out? You know, as you could see, the reading level with the same group was a little lower this year. So we definitely want to do what we can to work intensively with that group to bring them back up to where they should be.
Okay, thank you very much for all that information to Elizabeth, Deborah and Suzanne for all your work as coordinators. And Dr. McGinnis, thank you very much. Questions or comments from the school committee? Everyone, let's see, Lindsay.
Hi. I thank you so much for sharing the data and, you know, explaining so what's going on in the schools. I had two questions. One was, they're mostly curiosities and there may not be an answer at this point, just things that I noticed. There seems to be a big difference between elementary tier three reading needs and middle school tier three reading needs into the secondary. I'm just, I'm just curious. I mean, it was, it was striking, you know, the difference in those two groups. And there's, you know, year over year, there's different cohorts, but the percentages in that tier three group didn't change a whole lot from one year to the next in those secondary levels. I'm just, I'm curious about that. And the second curiosity was, I've never seen iReady data so striking as the ninth grade math and that striation, the two different groups. Like, it was just shocking to see what that looked like. I was just kind of curious if there's sort of any working theories as to what's going on there. Like, almost no tier two in those two groups. It was just odd. I'm just kind of curious about those two things.
Yeah, I could just start by saying, Lindsay, thank you for that question. And we've been asking ourselves a similar question, especially in my new role of working with the middle school. And I'm meeting with the teachers this week, the English teachers, to really unpack that and think about, who are these students? What supports are they getting? What other supports are they getting beyond English class? What do we need to add in? What was their experience in elementary school? So I echo, these are important questions and we are looking to get more information so we can have better theories ourselves.
Thank you.
The other question on eighth grade, right?
Help with the math.
Yeah, but Dan's not here.
Yes. Authoritative comment on that since Dan Wolfe is not here right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
John, may I have a question?
Lily had her hand up first and can.
Thanks. So thank you guys so much for this presentation. You know, I think as, you know, I think it's very clear that it's pretty impressive that we haven't dropped significantly due to COVID. And I was surprised at some of the numbers that we saw. My question is, did we disaggregate this data for different subgroups? I'm just, I'm curious because we're seeing whole, like, large chunks. And I guess I'm curious to see whether, you know, if we look at students at free and reduced lunch, if we look at EL students, if we look at, are we going to see some drastic drops that maybe aren't as clear when we're looking at these kind of large pictures? Or are there subgroups that really have been more affected by the shutdown? I'm just curious, as you guys have looked at the data, what you've seen in terms of that.
Yeah, Lily, we, so iReady is big, what you see, these big chunks. But what we do is we export all of our data through Power School. So we pull out our students. So we have data grids with every student's name on it and we color code them. And it has them, it has coded for their various subgroups. And so when we look at the student level data analysis with the students, we look at all of our individual students, but that data is on there as well. I do think that in January, like I said, this, like we were saying, this is just kind of this baseline data. I think that what we will do is we will be showing you and showing the teachers this, what's happening from September to June for all of our subgroups of students. So we do export it out of iReady and match it with Power School, make data grids that way because the students aren't represented by those groups in iReady, but they are in Power School. So we do create that for teachers.
And Lily, I can also add, we did start, because this data is just new in us. We did start and did a couple of charts that we just started looking at. Like, unfortunately, there's definitely gaps between the all students or say the non-special ed versus special ed, EL versus non-EL. There's huge gaps like there have been over time and like there is with MCAS. And you're probably aware, as a teacher too, of a national survey, a large national survey that was released last week that showed similar to our iReady results where there wasn't a ton of regression overall yet. that showed similar to our iReady results where there wasn't a ton of regression overall yet. Those most affected were the groups, the subgroups that we suggested here. So Dan, who is a wonderful statistician, actually is in the midst of working on some of that data, just to give that to us. But the first two charts looked very similar to what 2019 iReady did for those subgroups, a lot less than the non, but similar to what they were last year. There were just two of them that he shared today, but it wasn't enough to really bring here tonight. I'm happy to do that in the January meeting or when we share that data.
Okay.
But I, critical, sorry, I think the critical point here and the most important part is the beauty of iReady and why we selected this three years ago is that for every student, we're able to pinpoint and target where the learning needs to happen. And as both Deb and Elizabeth have shared, they have done due diligence and made individual colorized graphs for teachers to be able to then make their groupings around that. So while we don't have the exact data that you're referring to, we definitely, at the individual level, we do follow that.
Thank you. Kendra, you got a question or comment?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thanks for all your hard work. I think your roles have been invaluable to this district. And as your management of the coaches and your work with the coaches and then their work with the teachers, I think it has made a tremendous difference. So I really appreciate everything you're doing. I wanted to double down a little bit on what Lindsay said because it is pretty striking data about the change in from elementary to the middle school and then also that ninth grade cohort in both math and and reading, and it's that risk category. And I I wish I could say that this is like a unique year, but we have seen this year over year at the middle school. And so data is only good as how we use it. I really want to make sure we are going to continue to use data to make change because it's, we need the support there to make the change and we see it, we've seen it year over year. One question about, and maybe Dan, maybe he's not here, but it was about the eighth grade math and are they getting is those students and teachers getting the same type of supports that the K to seven teachers are getting? And I I can put that in the parking lot because he's not here. And then my last, oh, please, I will stop.
Can I plug in my computer, but I can answer the piece about the support of the K to seven for the math. And that this year, you know, it is the first year Dan's eight through twelve and I'm K to seven, but our coach spans six through eight this year and works with the eighth grade teachers, the exact same amount as the other two teachers. So we are also, we've also done some try piloting of common curriculum across six through eight. So that is also a change that I think you'll hear more about, I guess, Teresa in a future meeting. I think Dan and I are coming to you. So those are two very big changes this year in terms of math that I I hope will make a difference. But they are different than in prior years, Kendra. So it is more aligned curriculum across six to eight. And we're in having the coach kind of make everything cohesive and consistent. And Dan and I are actually working together with six to eight as well. So it's not like I don't see the eighth and he doesn't see six through seven. So it's really a cohesive unit this year, I think.
Great. Thank you. And I know this is your first year stepping into middle school and I'm so grateful for you for doing it. Um, I had one last question and it really goes to Lily's point was the other thing I saw, and I know the numbers, the percentages are are small at times, but I did see a trend of although some of the greens increased, the reds increased too and kind of took away from the yellows. And I worry about the, over the last eight months, the kids that are most impacted and are most at risk are the ones losing the most. And so I do worry about how are we going to continue to support those students that are falling the furthest behind? So I just wanted to put that out there that the data says that too.
That's a really good trend that you noticed and that's exactly what is happening. And Lily pointed out as well is our students who have the highest need, that has increased. And so some of the stuff that we've shared here in terms of our title one supports, we are moving them to the grade levels in the areas that have the greatest need. I know seventh grade is one area that we're focused on. So we're able to do that. Our reading specialists are looking at this data and making their graphs and their meeting groups around it precisely to give that double dose and triple dose in some case. Elizabeth mentioned the the increase in more cohesive curriculum in our sub separate programs so that they're not doing something different. You know, they're doing standards based teaching and we're supporting those teachers in in a better way as well. So those are just three examples of how we're meeting their needs.
Thank you all very much. I really appreciate it.
Any other other questions or comments? All right. Thank you again to all of you, the coordinators and to Teresa for you to putting all this information together. There's a lot here. My part of what I'm, my back of my head, I'm saying next time we should get the curriculum subcommittee because I think you can dig, they can dig into it even more. And I think that'll be maybe the next step down the road and there's the next iteration for for iReady. But thank you very much for bringing this to us. Let me move on to the next agenda item is the update on on school reopening. And so we just have a brief update from the superintendent, a little bit about kind of where hybrid instruction is at and then on the testing as well.
Excellent.
Dr. Galson.
Yes, thank you. So I will be brief because actually we're in a pretty relatively consistent place right now. So just a few updates from the other side of the bridge. That's what we'll say right now is that Watertown High School moved to hybrid in-person learning on December 2nd. Very excited about that move and so far it's going quite well. I did spend a little bit of time today with Principal Jacob Ozzy, walking around the building and looking at our classrooms and really feeling pretty confident about having our students there. And it was just, it's just great to have people back in our buildings. So so students at all levels, pre-K all the way through high school are currently learning in the hybrid in-person model. I would comment that attendance is strong. I don't have a slide specifically dedicated to this. But really it's remaining pretty much at the ninety-five percent level at all levels. And we have some fluctuations, but I don't want to make it seem like it's just ninety. It's primarily ninety-five, which is actually pretty typical for regular school. And we remember we track attendance through attendance in both the A, I'm sorry, the synchronous learning when they're not in school plus when they're in school and the morning meetings and the closing circles. So we're trying to keep really good track of our students throughout the day. But we are seeing really strong attendance. If people are not attending, we have a lot of outreach to make sure that our students are not having difficulties getting online. We do have some students who are actually coming into the buildings more often, especially we have some of the high school level just to make sure that they're keeping up every day. So our middle school, this is just something I wanted to review. Our middle school and high school students are able to zoom in if they are sick or on quarantine. And soon we'll be able to move and have that happen with elementary students as well. And our principals will share information on how that happens in in the near future. So I did want to make sure that people understand that if you're sick, please stay home. And we are, you know, middle school, high school, it's easy enough to zoom in and soon we'll be able to do that at elementary as well. And the idea behind that is to, once again, promote people to keep your children home if they are not feeling well and please get a COVID test. So our next steps moving forward, the midpoint of our school year is on February 8th. From now until that time, we will consider ways to enhance learning, including reexamining the schedules at the elementary and middle school. We believe that our high school schedule is pretty dialed down pretty well right now. But certainly that's something that we will consider looking at our elementary and middle school as well. I do want to address that. I know that some folks are interested in trying to figure out how we can spend more time in our elementary buildings. And certainly that is something that we will consider moving forward. I've said it before, I just want to say it again. Unfortunately, we are in the 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 position where two of our buildings right now are in swing space, one at the kind of west and one in the Hosmer Z, which is making it a little bit more challenging in terms of space, in terms of bringing our kids back. But certainly that is something that we are committed to looking at. But right now we are a little constrained for space and all of our spaces are currently occupied. But that that doesn't mean that it's not possible. I just want to make sure that people realize it's it's a little more challenging this year due to the fact that we're in those swing spaces. One thing we will be doing is surveying families, students and staff regarding their experiences with the bridge to reopening in the next two weeks. So actually, we're hoping to have that out by the end of next week, just like we did in the end of last year and in the summer. We want to gather feedback from our family, students and staff regarding their experiences to help us move forward and decide what sort of direction we need to point to moving forward. So please look for those surveys. We'll work really hard to get great participation because your voice is very important to us as we consider our next steps here in Watertown. Families in the Watertown Virtual School will be surveyed as well in mid-January to determine their plan for the second half of the year. Remember that we asked our families to commit to the virtual school through February 8th. Several families have either already indicated they would like to move or stay right where they are. But we need to make sure we know exactly how many people we're talking about so that we we can make adequate plans or accurate plans for that pivot on February 8th. So that's a big moment for us. It's that happier point. And I think that at that point we'll have a really good sense of of direction moving forward to the last half of the year. So, you know, I I presented to the school committee on the 23rd of November, I believe, the metrics that we are keeping track of. So I've updated those metrics to reflect the data from last week. That's actually on our website as well. But just keeping track of where we're at in terms of the state's metrics and color coding. And we do see an increase over the last four weeks, both in the cases per one hundred thousand as well as the percent positive. But right now I do want to focus on the fact that in terms of our district and school specific conditions, and we're doing actually quite well within our schools. And I'm going to give you a few reasons why I think that that is. First off, I do believe that our families are doing what I just said, keeping their children home if they're sick, keeping their children home if there's a parent who might not be feeling well, just in case there's something within the family. That is essential. We want to make sure that people are not in our schools if they're not feeling well. Or if there's an indication that within the family, there might be illness. So please make sure that that's the case. And we are finding that to be the the reality. We, I think in the summer, not knowing exactly what our year was going to be like, anticipated more students during the day coming down with illness, having to be put in isolation. That is not necessarily happening right now. Really, it's, it's, I think we we drove home the message, stay home. So within our schools, we're not seeing dramatic numbers of cases for our kids who are in person learning. The other reason for that, I think that you know that we've been working hard on our testing program, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. But if we can get more and more people to test, then we will catch illness before it enters the doors. So once again, I encourage all of our families to enroll in our our testing. Right now it's free. It should be foreseeably free for the next month or two, and then we'll figure out what we're going to do from there. But why not? There's no real reason that I can think of why not. It keeps your family safe. It keeps our family safe in terms of our students and our staff. And I highly encourage that. So just a quick little student and staff testing update. So, you know, I know you know this, but we are currently staff testing. It is our 10th week. We are testing about three hundred and eighty staff members every week. It's all individual PCR anterior nasal swabs. We do drive up testing right outside the middle school. It's a well-oiled machine. Our school nurses oversee the program fully and completely. We can test up to two hundred and fifty staff in two hours. It's pretty remarkable. And if you get a chance, you can check out our story on the NBC nightly news with Lester Holt. In terms of our students, we are in voluntary student testing. I'll I'll explain this as quickly as I can. Please reach out either to your principals or your school nurses because they have the full information. But we're testing in pools, which means that we collect up to ten samples in a pool. They test that pool and if one sample or two samples are positive, then we come back and test the whole pool again individually to figure out who it is within that pool that has COVID. Obviously, the reason that we're doing that, I hate to say this, it's far more economically efficient. And we are grouping our students at the middle school and the elementary school by classrooms. So those students would probably end up having to isolate anyways. So it's no moving forward is would only be that classroom that gets isolated if there's a positive in a pool. Same thing, it's PCR anterior nasal swabs. I just explained what, so what happens if there is a positive pool? We call all the families. We arrange for some way of testing either either onsite. We're trying to figure out how best to do that or potentially even offsite. If you're under fourteen, the school nurses swab the children. If you're fourteen and over, it can actually be self-swabbing observed. It's easy peasy. And right now we're at about a fifty percent signup rate, little lower on elementary. We're doing really well in middle school and we need to get more of our high school kids back in. This is a community effort. Once again, we have all the protections, I think, in place right now to be very safe in our schools. But that isn't to say that our students don't play sports, our students don't hang out with their families, our students don't socialize. It is not just protecting our schools, but it's protecting our community. So once again, highly advocate for participating in our our student testing. And that is my update for today.
Okay. You know, maybe I have a few questions here. I just want to thank you again. We've done this, thanked you before, but it's really impressive what particularly what's been done with the testing, which I think has helped Watertown to to stay where we are in terms of all all three levels of schools are still being able to go hybrid, even though that's kind of a little bit of an uptick in the community. I think the schools are saying are staying quite safe. And that's a testament to all the work that you've done and others in the administration on putting together this great testing program. So thank you very much. Lindsay.
Lindsay. Sorry, I I just had, you know, two things. Number one, just to echo what you said, John, about the the testing program, it really is incredible. You know, I think that it, I just want to make clear to the community that this testing program, you know, that Watertown has set up, that it's PCR testing. And this is not the the rapid testing for symptomatic students system that the Department of Ed has has set up. You know, it is much more accurate. It's, it keeps us a lot more safe. And it's in Watertown is, is, you know, sponsoring this on for our students to keep our students and our staff safe. And so I just think it is a ten thousand times better system than, you know, what the state is attempting to offer. And I'm just very proud of of that work of what we're doing to keep our students and staff safe. The second piece, you know, just to, you know, kind of read it, read Dr. Galton's point, you know, is that if more students, you know, do sign up this, it really does keep our our community safer. It keeps our youth sports safer. It keeps our after school activities safer. It keeps our students and our staff and families and people in the community safer. And so I would just really encourage, you know, families to sign up and participate in that program. Super easy. My kids both did it and, you know, in in our participating and I hope that more people do sign up to keep good things going for our students in town.
Thank you, Lindsay. Any other comments? Kendra?
Yeah, very quickly, one is, what is the percentage by level, elementary, middle school and high school? Do you have that information of students signed up who are in-person students signed up?
So off the top of my, without looking at the forms, I think we're at about thirty-five percent of elementary. We pressed it over fifty percent at middle. I think we're at about fifty-five. And high school, we were very strong for the baseline testing. We were at two thirds, about sixty-six percent. It's dropped down now that we're in the individual testing. But I don't know, Joel, do you know if it's about forty to fifty right now in the pools?
I'm trying to do the math real quick.
It just started today, so I don't, I mean, I think that's, it's hard to gauge exactly right now because we're still getting signups.
It's like thirty, thirty-five, thirty-five percent right now. We're going to send out another blast. Yeah, but I think it's, yeah, it was a lot, a lot for the for the original, the baseline, but.
And is high school once a week?
Yep.
For a student, what you said, yeah, that's your goal.
Yeah, they do cohort A on Mondays and cohort B on Tuesdays. And they just walk off in this, down the catwalk and individually swab and move on. Like if I were, that's the easiest one of all.
So it's their in-person day. Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Um. Can I finish? Oh, so is there anything we can do? Those, we really need to get those numbers up. And so if there's things that we could do or just let us know because that's, it is such a key to keeping kids in school. And I hope we can get that word out. I, one other point, is there any thought to making it mandatory at some point? Just looking at what the, what the next two months may look like.
Well, thank you, Kendra. Certainly something that that we can consider and, you know, it is something that that, you know, ideally if we could move after the first of the year to make it mandatory, that would be one thing. I would say that, you know, we're not at this point, we have both ways to learn. You can learn in person, you can learn remotely. I mean, there's no advantage. I mean, honestly, there's, it's it's kind of at this point, a little bit of a personal preference because we're able to accommodate most people. That being said, then, you know, maybe if you want to be in person, it could be that it is something that is mandatory. I'm not saying that that's the direction that we're going in, but Somerville, that is the requirement. You can't come back to school in Somerville unless you are part of the testing program. So it's something to consider as a community, but it would, I think it would be a, I'm, I'm sorry. So it's something to consider as a community, but it would, I think it would be a, I'm, I'm sorry, you know me, I'm an advocate for this. Just because I think that testing is one of the, one of the key ingredients to effective, effectively managing a pandemic. So, and we have it here.
Okay.
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, and I agree that it's such an important key, and we're making a big investment in it. It'll help our kids stay in school, and so anything we can do to support it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Amy?
Yeah, I just wanted to have a clarifying question with the kids that are in the high school being tested. And this might maybe help with having them know to go to get tested. Are the students receiving emails weekly to remind them? Because I'm not sure, my daughter might have been confused today, but do they have to have a new form filled out every time?
So I think that that might be part of the confusion. Because I think that, I think some of the students thought that since they signed up for the baseline testing, they were all set. But they actually have to only sign up once more, which is for the pool testing. Well, the parents have to sign them up if they're not 18. And once they've done that once, then they're good to go for the rest of the time, unless you change your mind. So I think that it's really, it's a two-part thing. One was for baseline and one's for pool testing. And I think that Principal Jacob Ozzy has sent that out in a smore.
Yep, the smore went to adults and the students. Students were reminded over the PA, which I think some students ran up and they were like, oh, can I do it next week? So when we got on the PA today, which I hate using the PA, but it was a good use of it to say to students, if you signed up, you need to get out there. We'll give you a pass to go get tested. And if you didn't sign up, please look out, we're going to resend that smore with all the information and all the signup details.
Yeah, okay. That, yeah, because that could have been a little bit of the confusion. And then the other thing, I mean, to Kendra's point, how do we get it out there to get all of those kids? Because that is the most important group, I believe, that should be tested. I mean, unfortunately, we just have a lot of kids not coming to school right now in the high school itself. So maybe, I don't know, I mean, is there, is there a time thing we could set up that's convenient for people? I'm not sure, maybe we could brainstorm and think of an idea that will encourage kids to come or something. I'm not sure. Maybe, can you offer it at, if they're going to a sporting, their practice? Could they offer it before a practice or something? I'm not sure, but.
Well, so, Dr. Galton, I think there might be a bit of confusion, not on your part, Ms. Donahue, but some people were confused. We sent it out a few times, but the pool testing is for those that are actually physically in the building. So the students that are remote, you know, of which there is, you're right, there's a large percentage of our population that is staying remote. Those aren't, that's not where our pool testing is coming from, but that was an original confusion.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, again, thank you very much for all those updates, Dr. Galton. Next item is the Building for the Future. And we already had some presentation in the high school about the elementary project. Mark, do you want to give any update there?
Yeah, I, one brief update. The, well, a couple of brief updates. At the Kynef, my understanding is that blue board is being delivered, and they're starting on the inside, finishes at this point. A couple of members of the school building committee have already gone in the building, and the school building committee will be going in probably sometime in the next couple of weeks. And I know Superintendent Galston is going in. The stairs are pretty much complete inside, so making a lot of progress. Tomorrow at 4 o'clock, the school building committee and other town officials will be at a topping off ceremony, which is the final steel beam being placed in place at the Hosmer, which is very, very exciting. And I know Erin sent out, I saw something on Facebook about getting some parents to sign the beam. And if anybody on the school committee has an opportunity to go over tomorrow during the day, you can sign the beam. It's another exciting milestone for the second elementary school. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mark.
Can I just add just something?
Yes.
After the presentation from the, about the high school, I'm just, once again, struck by the, how thankful I am for the support of the Watertown community to undertake the feasibility study and then moving into schematic design. I think that's just such an amazing step. But all you really need to do is drive around Watertown, as we just mentioned. You know, watching the crane lifting the final steel beams today. I mean, it's pretty impressive. I mean, driving by the Kynef. And, you know, what we've got here is the best commitment to our students for providing them with truly a future-facing educational environment. And we are so fortunate here in Watertown, and I just appreciate so much the support of the community. And I know the future is bright for our kids.
All right, thank you, Dr. Galton. Next up is the, we have several action items. The Budget Finance Subcommittee met a week or so ago, last week, and had some information on the next budget, budget goals and priorities for the next fiscal year. Kendra?
Yes, thank you. We met on Tuesday, December 1st, and we discussed the district budget priorities. And I neglected to put this in my notes, but we voted to recommend those budget priorities to the full school committee. That was a three to zero vote, and we adjourned at 7:30.
Okay. So I think, let me ask first if there's a motion to approve the report?
I make a motion to accept the report.
Or second? Second, okay, roll call, Amy?
David Stokes? David, hear me? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Lindsay Moska?
Yes.
Kendra Foley?
Yes.
Lilly Reed?
Yes.
Mark Sideris?
Yes.
John Port.
Amy Donahue?
Yes.
So then we have the FY '22 budget goals and priorities. Kendra, do you want to say anything on that or turn it over to Dr. Galton?
No, I'll turn it over to Dr. Galton.
Excellent, thank you very much. I just want to give you some highlights about our budget goals for next year. Every year, we provide the school committee with a sense of where we would like to head as a district in terms of supporting our district's improvement plan and our strategic objectives. As I've mentioned here, we are heading into year four of our district improvement strategy. That is the last year for the first plan that we've implemented, and we will start the work of creating a new district improvement strategy moving forward from there. But just a reminder, we have four goals. One is around equity, one is around excellence, one is around community, and one is around our Building for the Future projects. In addition to those goals, this year, we certainly have layered in some support for post-COVID-19 education. So certainly, we're optimistic that we'll be able to kick off the FY '22 year in a somewhat normal circumstance. So in our first, sorry, in our first, I'm highly distractible. In our first objective here for equity, basically, there's two larger focuses here. One is on certainly interventions and supports for our students, as we just saw with our iReady data. You know, we might be doing all right for right now, but we certainly have some areas that we're going to have to work on, especially with our year three. So we need to make sure that we're prepared and ready to start the year to meet the students where they're at when they start back in school in the fall of 2021. The other one is really about our equity work, which we've been engaged in for the last three years. So we're going to continue to, with that commitment, providing professional development, making sure that we're looking at our curriculum resources, making sure that we are, you know, devoting as much as we need to, to hire and retain a diverse workforce. And one area that I'll talk about in my chair's report, sorry, my superintendent's report, don't want to be the chair, is embedding equity support and leadership within the existing WPS organizational structures. That is something that, you know, I think we need to have ongoing embedded support, just like we have in terms of coaching, but really more on a district level for our work moving forward. The second one, the second area is around excellence. We will continue to work on our curriculum design. Dr. McGinnis and her team have a very well-articulated curriculum review cycle, heading into social studies and finishing of our math review. As you know, we were approved for our Engineering Technology Chapter 74 program. And we are looking to when we will implement medical assisting. That's our second one that's been approved for Part A. We still have to get approval for Part B. We're considering whether next year is the best year to do that. We're not completely sure, given all the limitations that this year has presented us, but we are, we are in discussion as to what that might look like. But no matter what, we are on the path to having those two Chapter 74 programs in place within the next two years. We can continue with our literacy programming, K to five and six to eight. And then, as always, this will always probably be on our budget goals, making sure we commit to refreshing our promulgations, grade six through nine, to maintain our one-to-one initiative. And this will be our last year that we roll out FLESS in the elementary level with our fifth graders coming online for FLESS, for foreign language in the elementary schools. So very excited about that. But all of these here have implications in terms of the budget. Terms of communication, a lot of these, and you'll see some of these initiatives are in keeping even what we had last year, because we did have this little hiccup in this year. But we will, you know, continue to create our more and warm and friendly building environments, promoting our fine arts program when we're back at it. And kudos to the crucible, because even when school is not open, we're able to do our performing arts. But it will be great when we can actually do it in person again. Making sure we're leveraging our communication strategies, really working with our community liaisons. We heard earlier from Kate Phillipsen, that is one of the, I would say, the pride of Watertown right now in terms of outreach for our families whose first language is not English. And that's something that we have to commit to moving forward. Really focusing on our safety and security measures in our existing buildings as well as preparing for our new buildings. Because, believe it or not, next fiscal year, the Kynef will be coming online. So we're going to have to spend a lot of time making sure that our safety and security measures, I mean, they're all built into the building, but we're going to have to learn them. So that's something that we'll have to focus on as well. And then always incorporating school nutrition into our larger community. One of the things, if you remember, with our, all of our elementary projects is we're going in a full recycling program, really from what kids eat in the kitchen all the way through composting. So that's something that we're going to have to pay attention to and dedicate in terms of stipending an advisor to help with that program. So, and last but not least, in terms of the Building for the Future project, you know, we have to start, we've already been preparing. I said this in the subcommittee meeting, and, you know, if there's, there's, what we're doing right now in terms of the COVID-19 preparations in our hybrid learning and our remote learning and our use of technology has really kind of, it's been like boot camp for how we need to think about using technology moving forward. So that's something that we will continue to work on in terms of how we make the most of our new buildings. We need to support our teachers as they move. Got a lot of moves going on here next year. And then the other thing we're going to have to do, which has a budget implication, is evaluating the need for additional staffing for our new buildings, which might include custodial staffing and technology supports. Because I think that that's going to happen when all these, you know, highly technologically advanced buildings come online. And then, last but not least, we have a little bit of an increase in enrollment at the Kynef. And since we are increasing the capacity there, we will need to consider enrollment adjustments based on the different capacities in the new buildings and make adjustments to attendance zones based on proximity to the schools. That is not something that we would necessarily embark on, the work we'll embark on next year, but it might not come to fruition until 2023, when the Lowell is done. So, but we do need to start thinking about if there's any adjustments or buffer zones that we have to create based upon the different capacities within our buildings. So that's an overview of our budget goals for FY '22.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Galton. So is there a motion to approve the budget goals and priorities for fiscal year '22?
Some moves.
Second.
Any further discussion, questions? Roll call vote?
Kendra Foley?
Yes.
David Stokes? Lilly Reed?
Yes.
Lindsay Moska?
Yes.
Mark, did I get you? Mark Sideris?
Yes.
John Port?
Yes, Amy Donahue?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your work to Dr. Galton and the administration on putting that together and the Subcommittee for their hearing about it. Next item was the Buildings and Ground Subcommittee. We don't have a written report, that happened recently, but we'll hear from David Stokes, just as a quick update on that. And then we have a one item to vote on.
Correct. So the Buildings and Ground Subcommittee met on December 1st also, at 4:30 in the afternoon. And we reviewed the capital improvement program for FY '22. And we, as a committee, voted to move it forward to the full school committee.
Okay. And I think we have a slide freezer, a slide freezer on that?
Yep.
I know Lori, Lori's in the audience, does she want to?
I can promote Lori. Hold on one second. Sorry, Lori. Give me a second now, I'll remember how to do this. Hold on. I don't know. Heidi? Let's see here.
Yes.
Lori is coming in?
Is she in now?
Lori's, Lori's in. Yep.
Lori, you want to just do a kind of overview from the slides focusing on the key areas that there will be for capital planning?
Hold on, I'm going to share my screen. Okay.
We can either go through this quick, or we can go to the last slide, and I can just summarize everything if we would like to do that.
Is that all right with you?
Yeah, that's, I thought, you could look at the slides, the main ones are really on the middle school, I think, right?
So we can, we can do that. So, yeah, so really what we have is, we don't have anything lined up for FY '22 in the elementary schools. It's really all, mostly all in the middle school, and nothing on here is new. All the stuff was on here from last year, and a lot of this is execution for our design that we had funded in FY '21. So this first one is to add air conditioning to the second floor, which, when you talk about the middle school, we have a bottom floor, a first floor, and a second floor. So the second floor is actually the top floor, which is actually almost the third floor. And so we're going to be adding, this year, we're going to be adding air conditioning in the cafeteria. This year, we've done design work for the air conditioning on the second floor. So this is execution of the second floor. The next project that you see there is the design for the first floor, which is the middle floor. So each year, we are doing a design and then an execution. So next year, we're looking to do the design of the middle floor. You can go to the next slide. The third project is to upgrade our fire protection system. Just to be clear, we do meet code because we are grandfathered in, but we feel that it is, it is, it is a good idea for us to bring the building up to the current codes because of, it's going to be around for a while. So what this does is it brings up the newer section to current fire protection codes, but it also adds a fire suppression system into the old area. So this is a very big project, but it is something that we feel is needed in a school that's going to be around for another 20 years. And the next project, this fourth project is remodeling the bathrooms. We've been remodeling about two to four bathrooms for the last couple of years. And so this just continues on with this project. This is not to beautify the bathrooms. This is actually to change out the fixtures because a lot of them are corroding, a lot of them are falling off the walls. But we're also upgrading it to touchless, touchless items across the board. So it does two things. It's a safety issue, and it's bringing things up to our new standards. And then the last project is interior painting. This is another one of those phase projects that we have been doing for the last, you know, two to three years. We're going around, we've, we've painted the older side, all of the hallways in the older side. So now we're looking to paint some of the hallways on the newer side. So this project here, this fifth project would finish the hallway painting of the, of the middle school, except for the main lobby area, that huge area. But all the other halls would be finished up with this project. See, go to just the next slide there. So as you can see, those are the five projects. We're looking at about $3 million, a little over $3 million that we're going to be asking for in FY '22. This is a very large number. You know, two years ago, our whole school budget was just over $1 million. But we have some big projects that we've been planning at for the last couple of years. So we think this is, this is the right time and the right time to make an investment for our middle school. There is one project in the high school. If you want to, we'll go to the high school because there's just one project, then we can, we can go from there. It's landscaping the courtyard. Last year, in our capital plan, we had a, we had a small amount, I think it was 35, 35,000 to design, and then in FY '22- a small amount, I think it was 35, 35,000 to design. And then in FY23, we were going to renovate the, the courtyard. We don't feel this is the right time to do that with the, the new school projects. So what we've done, we just added 15K across the board for the next couple of years to just maintain it. We don't have a landscaper in there right now. That's one of the reasons why we hadn't really had a lot of use for this, but this will get us landscaping twice a year. We bring out our landscapers, we make sure that it's safe, we make sure that we can put tents up and that we can use it across the board as we need to. So that pretty much summarizes the capital plan that we are submitting for FY21 for the schools this year.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
And I think the final is an overall slide. Yeah. Which lists the total, total amount. By way of background too, the, so the, the school committee approves a capital plan for the next fiscal year, and then that goes to the town, and then the town incorporates it into there where they look at it and they have to approve it as well and to incorporate it into the overall capital planning budget for the entire community. So are there, so we have the, the total here for FY22 is a little over $3.5 million. Most of that, the middle school fire suppression is the biggest piece there, single piece.
And John, you might want to have Heidi talk about that FFNE line, just real quick.
Thank you, Lori. You'll see that we have the FFNE for the Medical Assisting Program. That is based on our coordinator, Laura Alderson-Ratundo, had, had visited some other schools and made a list of all the equipment and cabinetry sinks and everything that would be needed in the space to run the program, and she priced it out. So we are putting in for a grant. We did get $150,000 grant for the engineering program. We just won't know, you know, for quite some time, and we have to have something in place to purchase what we need to if we do not get the grant or for the delta of, if we do get the grant, if it's not, if it's not that high. So that, that's what was added on there, just to sort of have in place, and we're hoping that we don't. That would be a borrowing. So, because the town borrows anything over $100,000 generally. So this would be a borrowing, and if we were fortunate enough to get enough and not need this, the town just would never borrow the funds. So it doesn't tie up free cash because it's in that borrowing range. And hopefully they just, it just wouldn't be needed, but we have to have it budgeted to open the program.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for that addition. Can I just make one?
Yes. One additional comment on that particular item. Heidi, remind me, but I'm pretty sure you said that we would reuse that equipment?
Yes.
In the new high school?
Yes. Thank you. Yes. I mean, there might be a couple of cabinets or a sink or something that wouldn't fit. What, what, you know, I think what we would probably do is talk to the architects of the high school at the time before we order. That's what I talked to Laura Alderson-Ratundo about, is that we need to really figure out a layout of what we would do in our existing high school and try to make it so that it would all go over. But the equipment that's not attached to the walls, that's not the sinks and not the cabinetry, that would absolutely move into the new building. And anything with the engineering, the grant that we're purchasing for next year, also, all of that would move into the new high school.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, thank you. So I'll look for a motion to approve the FY22 capital improvement plan?
Make a motion that we approve the FY22 capital improvement program as presented.
Any further discussion? A roll call, Amy?
Kendra Foley.
Yes.
David Stokes.
Yes.
Lindsay Mosca.
Yes.
Lilly Reed.
Yes.
Mark Sideris.
Yes.
John Portz.
Yes, Amy Donahue.
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you very much. Next item is the approval of gifts. We have four gifts that were made to the schools. $500 from Gartiganis Brothers for the robotics club, $100 from William Byrne for the robotics club, $1,000 from Pacon Park Church for the Watertown Family Network, and a little over $1,100 from Custom Inc. Custom Inc. is part of a fundraiser for the class of 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion, questions? Roll call?
Kendra Foley.
Yes.
David Stokes.
Yes.
Lindsay Mosca.
Yes.
Lilly Reed.
Yes.
John Portz.
Amy Donahue?
Yes.
Did you call Mark?
Mark Sideris.
Yes.
Next item will be the approval of minutes. We have minutes from November 9th and November 23rd. I think maybe we could approve them together. Is that okay?
Yeah. I make a motion, we approve the minutes of November 9th and November 23rd as written.
Second.
Any questions, changes, additions? Okay, roll call?
Mark Sideris.
Yes.
Kendra Foley.
Yes.
Lilly Reed.
Yes.
Lindsay Mosca.
Yes.
David Stokes. John Portz. Oh, you're muted. Yes.
Muted. I shouldn't be muted. Well, no. Okay. Reports, FY21 budget update. Heidi, want Heidi to speak to it?
Want me to share my screen, Heidi?
Thank you. Oh, yeah, if you would. Thank you. Putting up the, let me get back to the presentation.
Hold on.
It's, it's brief. I could start if you want. There we go. Thank you. So just, I just did a very brief one. I knew we would have a lot in tonight's meeting. So, you know, as, as, you know, the high school just came back, we're continuing to add temporary hires for remote learning needs for, we had some building-based substitutes at the middle school. We have some classroom monitors to assist when kids are online with the cohorts and if they're having connection problems or, or anything like that to help the teachers' balance. It's not in every classroom. We only did a small number of them to sort of float. We had, we hired a monitor for the entryway for Lowell for at least this year. They have never had one, but for the tracing. So that's just an example of some of the positions that through June would likely be in place till, through June. And we can charge off those salaries to the coronavirus relief fund, which expires on December 30th. And then after that, we would change the salaries to the Easter grant. So it's not affecting the budget, but I just wanted to point that out, that we, that we are still hiring. And the town's cares right now, unless it's extended, the town's cares grant also expires December 30th. So we're working with the town. And many of our expenses have already been moved over, but we're continuing to finish categorizing and moving them to the two grants. So we also have some unfilled positions this year that just, you know, with the circumstances that we have. So we, right now in the budget report, it, there's savings, but I don't know if by the end of the year, if that will be fully realized. And of course, some of our things are pay-as-you-go stipends and athletics and things like that, that don't get incorporated and occur later. On the expense side, you know, the, most of the expenses to reopen or that were directly related to technology needs, the vast majority of them have already been ordered and are reflected in the budget. Then maybe there's some more of, a few things still coming up. And our regular ordering has now picked up that everyone's back in school, art supplies and things like that that normally would happen. So we do expect that in some of our lines, we will see some savings, you know, some in transportation, some of the things that are reduced usage. But on the other hand, technology and some of those things will go over budget. So that's essentially a snapshot. And once in January, after we have put essentially what we can to the grants, this will, you know, be sort of solidified of where, that it's going to stay there. Again, there is some talk that potentially the town cares grants will get extended if those, any towns that have funds still remaining. But it's very late in December, and so far there's been no word coming down that I'm aware of. So, so that's what we're working with the town. I'll get that squared away.
Thank you very much, Heidi. Any questions on the budget report? Okay, seen on enrollment update. Dr. Golson?
I think that we are doing well with our enrollment. I would like to thank the principals for being very flexible as people move back and forth between hybrid or virtual school. If anybody in the, in the public is looking at our enrollment reports, you can see that we have the division with our virtual homerooms in terms of the numbers of kids that are in there. Right now, we're doing, you know, quite well with our attendant, oh, sorry, our enrollment, and we don't anticipate any major issues. Although I did, you know, discuss earlier that come February 8th, when there's a lot of changing, then we're going to have to see what we do with staffing and if we're able to keep the groupings as we have them. But right now, we're doing very well with enrollment. In fact, our numbers are actually increasing. I think our high school number we determined, sorry, I should look right, it's right here, but we're actually increasing our numbers of high school students. We're up to 690 students. It's a little lower than the beginning of the year, but if you remember, when I started, I think there were 661 students. So I think we're seeing some, some good increases within our high school. So that's the enrollment report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on that report? Okay, seen done, personnel update also?
Yep, it's, we're in a very quiet period right now in terms of personnel. It's not the hiring season anymore. I can pull that up if people want to just see. One area of focus right now is, sorry, let me just pull that up. One area of focus right now is hiring supplemental staff. You know, we are trying to add classroom monitors to support our, our staff. We have some staff that are actually working remotely who need to have somebody in their classrooms or when staff are absent. And, you know, the students are still in their classroom, but they might be able to zoom in. We are adding classroom monitors. It's a part-time position, you know, and it's very, very helpful, and we're trying to hire them as quickly as we can, we can find them, qualified applicants.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions on the personnel? Okay. Next two items, the school committee chair and the superintendent's report. I've actually asked the superintendent to go first before I make my comments. And among the comments that we're going to make, both of us are going to be speaking to some issues that have been certainly important in the community, were brought up at the community forum last week, and issues that are ongoing, concerns around bullying and bias. And we both are going to be speaking to that. But I'm asking the superintendent to go first, and then I will speak.
Excellent. Thank you. Certainly, you know, we held a community forum last Thursday and, you know, very, very well attended. Certainly, a lot of people wanted to, you know, share their voice and their thoughts about the schools. Certainly, you know, it was a hard conversation and, you know, reflecting back on it and, you know, receiving emails and hearing from people. I certainly want to take a moment to apologize to the community for some of the concerns that were brought forth regarding the forum this past Thursday evening. It's clear that what we really needed was to have far more space and time for, to simply hear and listen to community questions and concerns. And we really need to continue to listen, moving, listen more moving forward. And I'm really sorry that the questions that we developed did not feel positive to the community. Clearly, we have to work to do before we can answer questions that we put forth. And I hope that we can reach such a place through working together to get to that point. I would like to say that I think we all share the same goals, which include making the Watertown Public Schools the safest, most welcoming and most inclusive educational environment for all of our students and families. They and you deserve nothing less. I'm dedicated to being both a leader and being a listener in this process. So to the end, I want to share with the community some ideas that I have moving forward to engage our diverse community in ongoing dialogue for anti-racism work. So in addition to our anti-bias coalition, which has been up and running for the past several years, we will be inviting three parents to serve on our Equity Leaders Team to help actualize its four goals. The four goals of the Equity Leaders Team being evaluating and implementing an inclusive, anti-racist and anti-bias curriculum, hiring and retaining a diverse faculty and staff, providing in-depth professional learning for staff on anti-racism and bias, and creating safe and supportive and welcoming learning environments for our students of color. In addition, I am recommending the formation of a parent advisory council for our parenting caregivers of color focused on diversity, anti-racism, equity and inclusion. I commit to meeting with the group at least once a month, if not more, I do believe it will be more frequently through the end of the school year, and obviously likely beyond for many years to come, with parents serving as the chair of the pack. I will intend, I will listen, I will ask questions of the pack, I will answer questions that they have. But I really would like for the parents to lead the effort and set the agendas for these meetings. It's a way to give space and voice for our families who, you know, I think really wanted to have that space, what, what I heard from Thursday night. I'm sharing with you that I will be proposing and anticipate posting after the new year for a suitable candidate to fill a district-wide role of Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. This position will be an integral part of our leadership team and will facilitate our ongoing equity and anti-racism work for our students, staff and families in larger community. We began exploring this position last year prior to the major budget adjustments that needed to happen due to COVID. Additionally, I know there are concerns about me having retained a consulting group to specifically assist us in reviewing the incidents highlighted in the news. I stress that this one report is not the solution. It is one report, and it will not end racism in Watertown. However, I do believe that it is one step in the right direction as we need to fully, completely understand what happened. And we are committed to opening our policies and procedures for external review to determine where we may, where we may need to improve. I understand and acknowledge that there are concerns about the consultants that I selected, and as such, I will continue to consider how best to conduct the external review of the specific incidences that were brought to our attention as well as our policies and procedures. Once again, I am truly deeply committed to our core values of excellence, equity and community. And I fully believe that we must continue to move forward as an anti-racist community. I invite any community members to join me for a virtual Zoom coffee on December 22nd at 9:00 AM and again at 7:00 PM. And we'll be organizing additional forums on moving forward towards being an anti-racist community in the month of January. Once again, please note that I am very committed to this community and I want to do what's best for everyone within it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. I'm going to, I have a statement that I would like to read, and then after I've read that, I will open it up if any other school committee members want to make a comment. So, "At the community forum last Thursday, members of our school and town community spoke with passion and conviction around events, recent events related to bullying and racial bias in the Watertown schools. I thank everyone for attending. It was a meeting that included strong emotions and frustrations. I am sorry that we reached this point, and I hope that we can move forward as a school community and broader town community to address these important issues. The school committee is committed to that effort. As the superintendent just noted, there are plans and actions in the coming weeks to address these issues. These actions come on top of important initiatives and programs brought into the district by the superintendent and other educators in the district. Yet, clearly, more is needed for these efforts to become truly embedded in all parts of the school community. To do this, we ask for help from the broader community. As the last six months across this country have so clearly reminded all of us, bias and racial injustice are systemic in our society. We have many strengths in our community and across the nation, but much work to do on the path towards social justice. Our schools play a key role, but we need the support and help of parents and others in the Watertown community. As another step forward, the policy subcommittee of the school committee will meet next Tuesday to continue its discussion of anti-bullying and discrimination procedures, and also to discuss ways in which the school committee can work with the community to address these important issues of bias and discrimination. The proposals from the subcommittee, along with the superintendent's proposals that she just mentioned, will come back to the school committee at a meeting for our discussion and action, which we will, which will be scheduled for December 21st. At this time, I invite any members of the committee to make additional comments if they so choose. Anyone wish to speak on the committee?
Let's see, Lilly, Lilly have a hand up?
Lilly?
Thank you, John. So yes, I would, I would just like to add on a little bit to that, talking a little bit about what the policy subcommittee is planning to do. Before I talk about the work of the policy subcommittee, I want to start just again by echoing Dr. Golson's apology. I really do want to start by apologizing. I really want to apologize specifically to Leila. You know, I think that that's important, that we put her name out there and that we apologize to her. So I am going to apologize for myself. Um, so I am going to apologize for myself, um, to Leila and to her classmates and peers, but also to, to everyone who has experienced racism, harassment and bullying, um, in WPS, to families that have gone through this. Um, I'm sorry. It's painful and it's hard. And, um, you know, we can't necessarily fix everything, but we're, as, as Dr. Goldson said, we're here to listen. Um, we're here to learn and we're here to grow. Um, so I can't know the details of your cases, but, um, I do know that any student who has felt or is feeling unsafe in our schools, it's a failure on all of our parts, um, and mine included. Um, and that's unacceptable. So one of the ways that, um, we're hoping to move forward in the policy subcommittee, um, is by trying to provide more opportunity for community feedback and involvement. Um, so Dr. Goldson just mentioned a new parent group, um, that's going to be advising the district. Um, and an offshoot of that parent group will be forming to create, um, a new community advisory board for the policy subcommittee, um, that will be headed up hopefully, um, by Ms. Candace Whitmore. Um, and she's going to kind of help take the lead on the formation and scope of the work being done. Um, and this work will actually be starting, um, on Tuesday, December fifteenth at five PM. And I'm really inviting and hoping that the community comes out, um, talks to us a little bit about their thoughts around our policies and gets involved. Um, I think the more voices we hear, the stronger we become as a community. So I'm really looking forward to working with everybody, um, and to hopefully getting us on, on a really positive path forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lilly. Uh, anyone else wish to speak? Uh, Mark?
Thank you, John. Um, I appreciate the efforts, uh, put forth by Dr. Goldson and all of these new initiatives, having sat in like the rest of the school committee did on that meeting the other night. We have a long way to go here and I'm committing as a member of the town council that we on the town count, the town side will also be assisting in any efforts that we can assist to make sure that this is a town-wide partnership to try to stop the systemic racism that is happening throughout the country, but in particular here in Watertown right now. And I do, I'm, I, I hope that, you know, we can make some comments tomorrow night at the council meeting. And, uh, I'm committing that we will be partners in this on the town side as well.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Does anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Dr. Goldson. Um, next item would be new business. Need new business? Okay. Seeing none, uh, our agenda also lists some announcements coming up. Uh, school building committee will meet on, uh, December sixteenth at six o'clock. The anti-bias coalition meets on December twenty-first at six o'clock. The superintendent's coffee, which Dr. Goldson already mentioned just a few moments ago, um, the twenty-second at nine AM and seven. And the next scheduled school committee meeting, well, actually it's January fourth there, but, uh, as I just mentioned, I, I think we will have a meeting on January twenty, excuse me, December twenty-first, which would be, uh, two Mondays today, from, uh, from today, two weeks from today. Uh, so we have public forums, opportunity if anyone from the public would like to speak at this time. Anybody wish to speak at this time?
I think that, um, Mary Russo had questions in the Q and A.
Okay.
But I think that she said that she was going to ask them. It said that she has two quick questions during the forum.
Well, she's here, I think.
Yeah. Let me sit. So I have to promote her? Is that how that works?
I guess. I don't know. I mean, to the, for the webinar?
Yep. I will do that. Mary, I'm going to promote you to panelists so that you can ask your questions.
Dee Dee, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Okay. I wrote my questions down for you in a condite, uh, condensed order. Started out with two, but as the meeting went on, it, I think it led to three or four, but under two minutes. Any questions and answers?
Well, you, you're asking about the minutes of the meetings?
No, I asked about the minutes. I also had a few other questions there, um, in regards to St. Jude's being open. I heard that students are not attending there because of ventilation. So all my questions are listed under question and answers. They're under two minutes. I would respectfully ask you to see if you could read them.
Do you want me to do that?
Uh, because I have you here and I don't have them in front of me. I'd have to unmute you and go back to them and then I would not be able to speak.
I guess I don't.
They're down in the Q and A.
Why don't you read the questions, John?
Yeah. Do you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
They're there.
So I would like to know, is it true that St. Jude's does not have students because of ventilation? Is that accurate or are they all remote? If so, what are you doing, superintendent, to address this? I wrote before September to Mina Charloni with questions and never got a response.
I wrote in September.
Go ahead, Dr. Goldson.
I don't need to interrupt. I'm, I wrote in September. So I'm curious.
So St. Jude's is currently open. It's been open since October twenty-seventh in a hybrid mode for our students. Um, we have air purifiers in every single one of the rooms and the ventilation systems are operational. Uh, but we did feel that it would be beneficial to have the air purifiers in there as well.
Okay.
Okay. So thank you for that answer. So they are, are definitely, uh, safe and students are in there. I heard differently.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, so like I said, I think you have quite a few little questions floating here. Um, we did share.
Three or four.
There, we shared with the community that there was a, an altercation with students that was off of campus. Um, so that was actually communicated out to the middle school families. We, yes, we are, we did lose our HVAC technician and we are actively searching for one. Um, I would.
Could you read that question, please, that I wrote? So others will other, understand it.
That we were proud to have left under short, a short time transparency, no longer the only school system to have one onsite. We are post, we have posted for a replacement for that position. Um, we are optimistic that we'll be able to do that. But in the interim and, um, in the interim, we have a contract for HVAC services. The reason for having our own onsite HVAC person is because of the fact that it's a department of public buildings. So it's economical to have an HVAC technician, but we absolutely have, um, an HVAC technician under contract. So if we had a situation, we would just do it that way. So it's not like we're without, we just don't have one internal.
Yeah.
I'm very familiar with that. I wanted parents and other people to be familiar with that.
Mary, we, we usually don't do a question and answer like this, but we want to try to finish.
I apologize. Go ahead. I, I, I don't know if you have many people asking questions. So I was just trying to be transparent and informative to parents, teachers, students and faculty.
I think were those the questions, I think, that we had?
I think there are a few more.
I have one more. When is the next coffee or meeting for the young lady at middle school to be heard all the time? She needs and deserves for her bravery to be interviewed by Channel twenty-five News because she was not protected or heard. Hate crimes are awful. She deserves so much more support as well as the other students and faculty that are having discrimination, retaliation and racism issues as well as criminal behavior. So as I stated before, I do have a coffee on the twenty-second, um, when it's, uh, nine AM. That would not be feasible for students or seven PM in the evening.
Nine AM and seven?
Yeah.
PM and is that via Zoom?
This via Zoom and I do believe that links are on the front page of the website currently.
Okay. I've signed up and I've had a problem. I don't know. I don't want to get into it for a long time because I know you're all very tired. So respectfully, I appreciate that. But for the past three school committee meetings, I have not received, I had to go through Ariel to get. And I don't know, I hope it's not because I'm being very vocal. I'm trying to be respectful. But I've joined since last year, so. I have not been receiving.
You know, agendas are posted on the, on the website.
They're, they have not been there, John.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak from the public? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
So sorry that you're all rushed.
That's no problem. We're, we're just finishing the meeting.
I know you're tired. I'm just trying to be transparent and be productive as a citizen and a retired teacher, um, in the best safety of everyone during this COVID. And I know you guys are doing the same. So please be respectful to me. And for three times within the school committee, I have not gotten the agenda.
Appreciate it. Like I said, the agendas are all posted on the website. Thank you very much.
They have not been sent to me.
Mary, we're, we're adjourning at this point.
You can adjourn, John, but don't be rude. I, I'm being respectful.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, Amy, we have a roll call?
Yes. Kendra Foley?
Yes.
Lilly Reed?
Yes.
Lindsay Moska?
Yes.
David Stokes? Mark Sideris?
Yes.
Jon Portz?
Amy Donahue?
Yes.
Goodnight all. Thank you.